The owner of the property is on board in view. I'd like to point out the fire exits are to your rear. These two exits to my rear taking into the building. So the only two fire exits are to your rear. Carrie, will you do a roll call?
Bob Crowe. Keith Cludier. Lynn Doeig. Russ Lockley.
President.
Mike New. Russ Pallett here.
Here.
Okay, let's record and let them have.
Second.
Second by Russ.
Aye. I'm sorry, that was correct, February 2nd and March 2nd. Minutes in the meeting. Okay, does anybody have any? Other? On that? Okay, then this time here, I'd like to ratify the decisions from the previous meeting. Robert and Cindy Flores assesses plot map sixteen lot one twenty-six, one Whittier Drive, Zoned R twenty. The applicant was seeking a dimensional variance constructed thirteen by twenty-three addition to be utilized as an in-law with the northeast corner of the addition being seventeen feet from the property line where twenty-two feet is required. Please revise that application was approved. Do I have a motion to ratify that decision? By Keith has moved it, seconded by, by Lenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, the next application to ratify was Samuel Cagan of assesses plot map three twenty-nine lot forty-three twenty-one mile road, Zoned R three. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct a twelve feet by twenty-four by ten foot nine garage in the front of the property. That application was also approved. And do I have a motion to ratify that? Okay, Mike has made the motion, I just need a second on it.
Second.
Second by Keith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, also we have the application of Chris Kuchu. Assesses plot map forty-nine lot seventy, one sixty-six Shady Valley Road. Applicant is seeking a special use permit and a dimension variance to construct a twelve by twenty-eight addition in the northeast corner of the home. The addition will be thirty-two feet from the property line where fifty is required. That application was also approved. If I remember right.
Motion to ratify, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Russ has made a motion ratifying. Keith has seconded it, all those in favor say aye. Nays, ayes have it. Okay. All right, now at this time here. All business, I'm gonna have the secretary read the application into record.
The owner and applicant is Joshua and Lane Mays. The location is AP ninety-one lot zero zero seven three oh four John Franklin Road. Zone is R two. Applicants is seeking a dimensional variance and special use permit to construct a thirty by thirty by thirty barn in the front of property, thirty-two feet from side property line where fifty is required. The barn will be thirty feet in height where nineteen is allowed and exceed the allowable lot coverage.
Okay, that application was continued so that the individual could stake it out. I was able to go up there and take a look at it, at the location. It, like he says, dugout, it's set up, you would never even see it from the road, it's a good location. The map and the location doesn't tell the truth, I mean, it's just, it's one of those places you gotta go up and take a look at and it's, John Franklin Road has grown quite a bit and I have no complaints, I don't know if any other members have any complaints on the application, you're good with it too, okay. Therefore, I believe he has met all the requirements for the application. He's seeking a dimensional variance. I have no complaints for that and approved, I don't know if the attorney wants to go over anything with that, our attorney.
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay, and also a dimensional variance, okay, I'm gonna have a vote on that, on the dimensional variance first, and make a motion, it's, I'd rather the board make a motion that we vote on the eventual variance at this time. Mike, would you like to make that motion?
Motion to approve the variance.
Dimensions, okay, and Russ has seconded it, okay. All right, I'll do a roll call vote on that. Mike New, how do you vote?
Approved.
All right, Keith?
Approved.
Lenny?
Approved.
I also approve, Russ?
Approved.
Approved, okay. All right, that application is approved for the dimensional variance, now for the special use permit, okay. Again, I had no problems with that at all, with the special use permit, if I could have a motion on the floor to approve the special use permit, Russ should make that motion.
So moved.
Keith seconded it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, at this time, the roll call vote on this one, two, Mike, how do you vote?
Approved.
Keith?
Approved.
Lenny?
Approved.
Russ?
Approved.
I also approve, okay, application is approved, okay. The next one. This is on the it's, you know, can you just read this in on the record, please?
The owner and applicant is Gail McHugh, born in Cauldron Church of the Earth is the applicant. Location is AP three oh two lot six twenty-eight Greenhouse Road. Location is R five. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to conduct onsite church activities.
Okay, this application is also continued. The request was for the, and I understand it come in from the fire marshal, the approval, but he couldn't do it until there's electricity out in the barn, is that what I understand?
That was my understanding.
All right, and there was also a question, okay, that's great, you're here. Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes, four or five things.
Can you, can you please give your full name and address?
Julia Cretian, Eminence towards you fifteen hundred New Snack Hill Road.
Okay, did you get all the information you needed?
Yes, I'm the attorney for the applicant. There were five things that the board requested that we come back with, one was the fire marshal's report, so the fire marshal did go out there, inspected the barn, said that there could be a maximum of seventy-four inside the barn, they could only use the first floor, that they needed fire extinguishers, which receipts for fire extinguishers were provided, hardwired smoke alarms, exit signs, and needed emergency lighting, there was an electrical permit submitted, number twenty-two dash one oh three, however, the building department has said that that can't be granted until they have a special use permit. And it's our understanding that once the special use permit is granted and the electrical work is done, the fire marshal has to go back out there and do a follow-up inspection in order for there to be a certificate of occupancy. But the fire marshal at this point has seen no problem with utilizing the barn for the church activities. The second thing that you guys wanted us to take another look at was the off-street parking, we provided an updated map which shows a hundred and twenty parking spaces that includes the ten on the driveway, which far surpasses any number of cars that they've ever had on the property, so that shows adequate off-street parking for the use. A neighbor had brought up a, what he referred to as a PA system, I provided a color photo of it, it's a speaker, it's not really a PA system, it's a speaker that any of us could go get, to our knowledge, there have been no noise complaints for this property, this church has been functioning for eight to nine years, they're recognized by the IRS and the federal government as being a five oh one seat three nonprofit church, and so we don't really think there's an issue with the speaker, they abide by the noise ordinance, noise ordinance applies, if there is a problem, police can come out and give teeth to that noise ordinance. You also requested a further description of the services, most of the services are provided off-site, occasionally there are memorial services which almost amount to like a spiritually led grief where family members and friends of the deceased can come together, share memories, share stories, that type of thing, they don't hold funerals on the property, the funerals are held at the funeral home, they go there, I know there was a question, I believe member New had questioned about whether or not they'd be bringing bodies onto the property, they don't want to, this is also their home, they don't wanna bring bodies onto the property. As far as the weddings go, generally, they go off-site for those too, occasionally because it is a beautiful thirteen acre piece of land, someone does wanna get married along the woods in green, however, again, this is their personal property, they don't want a three hundred person wedding at their property, generally it's six to, I believe, twenty, right? Six to twenty people, yeah, on the property for a wedding, it's not something crazy, no alcohol, no drugs, this is just the ceremony. And then you had requested an outdoor occupancy limit, we have provided a history of how many people tend to come to these events, how many people tend to be there, but as far as the maximum outdoor occupancies limit, we feel that it infringes on the First Amendment and the Rhode Island Land Use and Indigenous Persons Act to place an outdoor occupancy limit solely on this property because it's a church.
Okay, do you have anything else you'd like to present?
Not unless you have any questions, I'm free to answer questions.
I'm gonna call you back, okay? At this time here, unless the board has other questions, I'd like to open this up to the public, is anybody in the public would like to speak on this application? Okay. Oh, please step up.
My name is Martha McCulloch, I am the abutting neighbor that lives next door to them.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. Okay, give your full name and address again?
Martha L. McCulloch, thirty-two Greenhouse Road in Green Rhode Island.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth and not to butt the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, you live where?
I live next door to them.
You live right next door, so
Yes.
Is I'm looking at the structure, be to the left?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, what, what was it you'd like to bring up?
I do have an attorney that was supposed to come in by Zoom, so, there she is, the S A, yes, that's her. That was
Yes.
So she is here to represent my husband and I.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent, this is Seta Coey from Hinckley Allen, I'm located at one hundred Westminster Street, Providence, Rhode Island. Do you need to swear me in first?
Okay, I guess, do, do we have a picture of the young lady? No?
Able to turn on my camera if it's allowed from, if it's allowed as a feature?
I prefer you to turn on the camera if you can.
Yes, it's not coming up for me as an option.
Okay.
Just hang on, take a second.
Okay.
I know that this attorney had provided an opposition to the application that hit on a ton of stuff that we've already hashed out in the original portion of the public hearing, are we gonna rehash everything now? Because the board made it seem like we were coming back from
We, we are continuing the meeting and the individual in the audience wishes to, you know, speak, they, they can, you know, and if they're speaking through an attorney like your client is speaking through you, then yes, I have to represent that.
Can you hear me and see me okay?
Yes, okay, thank you. Are you going to give testimony?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay. So you have the full name and address?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, present your your testimony?
Sure, again, this is Seta Coey from Hinckley Allen, I represent Neil and Martha McCulloch who are the owners of thirty-two Greenhouse Road, Green Rhode Island, which is abutting the property of the applicants for the special use permit, and as mentioned earlier, it's if you're facing it directly to the left on the side of where the barn is located, and we are here today to respectfully request that the board deny their special use permit application for the reasons we've stated in the opposition we submitted on March thirty-first, but I'll also mention them today. What we're essentially concerned about is, A, this is not within the comprehensive plan of the zoning district, this is rural residential District Five and within the zoning ordinances, it's not intended to house public facilities, it's supposed to be a low intensity district, you know, if you go take a drive down the road, there are no public facilities in sight, and my clients are very concerned about this not being generally compatible with the other properties in the neighborhood, it's not consistent with the intent and purpose of what this land uses, Zone Four, and further, they are very concerned about safety issues, and I know this was hashed out during the February second hearing, and, you know, it's definitely a concern for traffic congestion, in the five oh one C three supplemental responses that was submitted with their application, the responses indicate that while the average number of occupants could be twenty to twenty-five people and could be bi-weekly, could be seven days a week, they're open to the public, they could even invite up to a hundred people on, onsite, and our clients moved to the country for a reason, they didn't wanna live in a congested area, they, they liked to have their quiet property to use, and, you know, this is all a concern to them. And the traffic I know was addressed in the last meeting, we, what was discussed was no on, on-street parking would be used, yet we submitted some photographs from events that took place after the February second hearing, and the street was being utilized for parking, and as discussed last time, this isn't a road that can allow for two lanes to pass, and, and they were parked on either side of the road. So we submitted those photographs, the number of people, the noise concerns, and most importantly, what my client is very fearful of is fires to take place on the property, as you are aware, and, and with the articles we submitted with our opposition, there have been many, many fires in the area, and in fact, the applicant's barn, I believe, caught on fire before, and what's a concern is, you know, there, the access, the control, being able to extinguish these fires in a reasonable manner when there's so many people on site, so many cars, so control and access is another concern of theirs. I, I know that this past weekend, as my client indicated, there was an event that took place on Sunday night, and there was a fire on the property, maybe perhaps a bonfire, and I'll defer to her to speak about that in more detail, but she smelled the smoke that came to her property, and it's something that she would like to be addressed. You know, time limitations on operations, as was mentioned during the last meeting, the, our clients do not wanna be sleeping with their windows up and listening to rituals taking place at night, you know, it's, there's potential PA systems being used, speakers, the, the noise is gonna be amplified whether or not they're using a PA system or the speaker they've submitted in that photograph, so noise is a concern, and if there's conferences, workshops, trainings, clergy members having conferences there, there, there's gonna be a lot of noise, and, you know, it's, it's turning this into a public facility essentially, and, you know, it's, it's something that we don't believe is allowed under the zoning ordinances as they stand, and it's outside of the intent and purpose of this residential district. I will defer to my client to see if she has any additional comments to provide at this time.
Okay. All right, your concerns are actually the safety, the traffic, am I correct? Okay, you're gonna have to come up to the podium if you're gonna speak. Right, one of your concerns is the traffic on the road?
Yes.
Okay. I went up there myself today, and I had a very difficult time getting by with a UPS truck there. Okay. Also, you're talking about traffic control in case of a fire?
Yes, sir. There have been numerous fires out there over the years that two of the houses within a half a mile radius have burned to the ground, and I know that the neighbor's barn had burned down, I just, there's not a fire department out, there is a fire department, but they can't get through if there were to be a fire.
Okay, you're saying with the vehicles parked out on the road, they couldn't get through, okay, they have been advised they cannot park in the road, even now they can't?
Yes.
There is no off-street parking. The pictures that were submitted, what was the date of these pictures?
That was, it was a Sunday, I would say maybe the end of February, the first of March.
I'm gonna need a date.
I don't have any such date, sorry.
You have no such date for pictures, cuz I just can't submit pictures, you know, without a date.
And we should be able to get the date-damped photographs, I can, I can provide that to, to the board.
Okay, it was after a meeting in March?
Yes, it was.
Second? Okay.
Are they still using the street? Are they still physically using the street properly?
No, they are not.
Okay. All right, so fire and off-street parking is a very big concern, not only of yours, but of also of ours. We will have to address it with the applicant. Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just would prefer that we're going to do something like, I don't wanna devalue my property in any way with them having a structure there and having numerous meetings, it, it did state that they wanted to have at least thirty-six meetings a year, and I think that's a little excessive.
All right, for the location, maybe, we'd have to review that. All right. All right, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat and see if there's anybody else who would like to speak on this application? Is anybody else who would like to speak on this application? Okay, I'm gonna have the applicant come back up, you heard the concerns of the neighbor?
Yep, so as far as the comprehensive plan, the planning department's already decided that this doesn't offend the comprehensive plan, as far as parking, they've stopped parking on the street, you have an updated map, they can fit more cars than they intend to have on the property, it's thirteen acres, they have the space, they have not been parking on the street since
As I drove up there though, you really couldn't drive off of that driveway, cuz then you're going over the curb, I mean, really, you don't have no place to really park out in the yard, there's no, no place to park.
Well, there's the front yard, and then they can go into the back behind the garage, there's a detached garage, and
Right, the detached garage is in the back, getting between the two of the people parked, it's a very difficult, and you're gonna jam it right up in there, I'm, when I'm saying, they've been presently operating as a church, but I don't see where they've been parking other than what's set up, I mean, it's not like they could just drive over that curb and go park up on the grass.
You can drive off of it on the grass, yeah, so they're letting, they're having people drive off the side of the driveway into the yard.
That's something apparently new.
Yeah, since, since the board has said that they don't want on-street parking.
Okay, and how about with them parking in the street since the last petition?
So that was a one-time deal, one of those cars was actually on the road, it was my client's driving up the road, coming back from Rhode Island Hospital, and someone waited to follow them in to bring them food, cuz they were just in treatment for COVID at Rhode Island Hospital that month.
Okay. I'm very concerned with the off-street parking and the traffic there, I'm, I'm very concerned with, I myself, just driving up there, couldn't get by a UPS truck. And it was only the two of us on the road. So, right now, I'm looking at this as a potential hazard of safety to your people you bring in, and also to the residents up there, until you can prove it to me differently, that's how I prove right now. But that's not what you, so you wanna resubmit? You gotta
We provided an updated map, that's what you requested.
The map, the map doesn't show what you're gonna do, I mean, you got a map, you got, I don't know how many acres there, but it doesn't show where anybody can park, it really doesn't.
You asked for an updated map, that's what you requested from the applicant.
Correct.
And we provided the updated map.
Well, the updated map. I mean, can you pass me the updated map?
Did you, did you get this?
That was the original.
Is it?
Yeah. The one that's got the fifty cars?
There's a fifty, there's an eight, there's a
I mean, you couldn't get by the trees to get that fifty car parked on.
They're not coming off the road, they're coming out of the driveway, they're going onto the property and then driving over to that area.
They're gonna drive all the way over there?
Yep.
They're gonna So right now, it's not made for it?
It's, it's
And it hasn't been made for it for the last since they've been operating?
It's flat ground, no, they're, they've made this change because the board requested that this change is made.
But there are applications for at least twenty-five and up to a hundred. Okay.
The updated map shows available parking for up to a hundred and twenty cars, which they never anticipate having a hundred and twenty cars on the property, but it's there if the space is required.
I don't foresee how that would happen. Okay. Okay, now, the road itself, coming into the location. I really find it very difficult, Chief, you know the area much better than I do, trying to get even twenty-five cars on that road going into the park.
If it's not marshy or not wet.
No, but I can't guarantee, you can't guarantee it's not
I'm throwing that out there. I'm very familiar with the address, the I'm very familiar with the address, um, the uh. You can park vehicles there. You, you might have to work at it, but um, my, my concern is, is uh.
With a hundred cars parked there, even twenty-five cars parked, are you gonna be able to get your fire apparatus in there?
Well, if they don't stay in the driveway, yeah, we can drive, we can get them in the driveway. That's not a problem. They just have to stay off the driveway. If they stay in the designated parking areas, that shouldn't be a problem.
But you know they're gonna be in the driveway.
This, um. How many years have your, your client been running the church there?
Eight to nine years. I believe it's two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen-ish. Two thousand thirteen.
And we haven't had any complaints?
None, no zoning, no noise, no fire, nothing.
Well, he did have a fire.
No fire complaints, but the fire that's, the party that's being discussed was a private event. This is still their house, so.
No, no, I understand. No, no, I'm saying they had a fire a few years ago.
But I'm also having a problem with that. You keep on calling it their private residence.
They live there.
They live there.
Okay, but yet they want to be a church.
They run a business.
They run a business. I'm having a problem mixing the two.
Well, they live in the house.
They live in the house, they and the other clergy, correct?
No, them. They're a married couple. They are the clergy and they live in the house.
But aren't they gonna have other clergy there?
There's like one or two that train with them but do not live there. They're not looking for it to be a boarding house. They're private residents. They just, the tax exemption extends if they get this approval. It's a married couple living in a house. They're clergy at this church. They're looking to continue to run the church that they've been running for nine years.
Okay, any, any other questions from the board?
And I would just like to add, they're not having conferences and it's like eight to ten people, twenty-three to twenty-four times a year. Every two weeks. It's for the full moon. So it's not fifty people, thirty-six times a year. It's eight to ten people, twenty-three, twenty-four times a year.
Tell us more about the fires, the fire every service.
So are you talking about the campfire that they had or, because most of the time on the altar, it's just a couple of candles. So generally, it's just candles. Um, they have some candles on the altar. I believe once a year, they have um one gathering where there's a campfire. And it's May first, right, May first.
Okay.
And it's away from buildings, so we're not looking, it's not happening close to the barn. It's not happening in the barn. It's away from buildings.
Okay.
And most of the. The full moon activities take place, I believe, seven to ten, seven P M. to ten P M. Everything else is afternoon to evening. There's no late night. There's no blasting music until two in the morning. And again, no drugs or alcohol on the property.
Now, how late will these rituals go on or masses or?
The, the twenty-four, the ones that happen every two weeks, it's about three hours.
So it wouldn't go past nine o'clock at night or?
Uh, like ten o'clock-ish.
They go to ten o'clock-ish and.
But they're mostly prayer services. They're prayer services. They're not events. It's a group of people praying together outside.
They're not chanting, they're conducting a nice.
I mean, if they are chanting, they're not yelling, they're, you know, conversational tone.
Okay.
Okay, please take a seat. Is there anything else uh the attorney's applicant would like to present? I mean, the uh, butter's applicant, uh, attorney?
Sure, I, um, can you hear me okay? Okay, um, one thing I'll just add is that part of the application, I did see. Um, that clergy member would be living at the property, so it, it raised concerns about whether this is turning into a boarding home. What if the use expands or?
Well, they claim that there is no clergy living there. It's just the two uh members of the household, am I correct?
The two, the married couple that live there are the clergy members. They're the clergy members.
But they're the only two that would stay there overnight.
Correct. It's just a married couple. This is their primary residence.
Okay. See, I'm having a problem between primary residence and them being a, a church. That's, that's two different things.
And also a function hall, which is another thing.
The house is akin to a rectory. They're not necessarily holding anything in the house. They're holding it in the backyard and they'd be utilizing the barns. They have final um electrical approval, the certificate of occupancy and final fire marshal approval.
And one thing I'd like to add is that my client's property is the one that's closest to the barn. And I know that at the last hearing, a, a neighbor had submitted a letter endorsing it. But he's on the opposite side of where these rituals and activities are to be taking place. So who's impacted most is my client.
Well, barn's already there. I'm gonna, you know, that's already there. I've seen that and that's, it's not something they get, you know, I mean. Maybe if they enlarge, if they came from a large mill, I mean, they'd have to put it someplace else. But we'd have to uh work on that at that time, not, that's not in front of us now. What's in front of us now is the ceremonies. My biggest concern is the traffic. Coming in and out, not only for the neighbors, but also for you, for your uh. People that you're servicing with the mass. So I'm very concerned with that.
If it helps because it's a nature-based religion, everyone carpools.
Please.
Because it's a nature-based religion, everyone carpools, so we say eight to ten people, but.
Yeah, but I can't control, I can't control. I, I can only control what I can control. You can't control a carpools either. I mean, that's, you know, as simple as that. I mean, I gotta look at what is there, what has happened. You've already been operating for what, eight years? And uh, I, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't see where you're parked anywhere else. And, and I seem to feel that if there was a fire there, you, we gotta, I'm putting you jeopardy. And I'm putting also the neighbors to jeopardy. I'm very concerned over that, especially in this location. This location, not to be mean and, and say, I live on the east end, but this is out there. This is, you know, just to get to this location takes time. It's past the old Western Coventry, am I correct, Russ?
The, the latter end of Hockensalo St. Hill Road.
Yeah.
Right near the Connecticut line.
Right. It's a very difficult area for fire trucks to get to without any vehicles out there.
And if I may interject for a moment, uh, the five oh one C three um application, the paperwork, the supplemental responses. Indicate that they do have these massive rituals that could have up to a hundred people, if not more. Uh, and how are you to control if a hundred cars, what if no one carpooled and a hundred people showed up in a hundred cars to the property? Again, that's another traffic concern.
Other tax considerations for five oh one C?
So they have I R S status. The only reason they're making errors because they received the municipal tax um exemption. But then the tax cluster flagged it because there was no special use permit. So they didn't even know they needed one until they received tax exemption and then lost.
Okay, so they're not receiving any tax breaks.
Not until this is completed, is my understanding.
Is the special use permit revocable? They don't live up to the um stipulations.
I think um that should be.
Stipulation.
I think the solicitor should uh interject on that one.
The, the board is right. Um, if you condition the permit on compliance with the conditions that you set. Uh, because you do have the ability to set reasonable conditions, then the permit is, it's reviewable, it's revocable as well, if that's one of the conditions.
But it can only be revocable on the conditions we set.
Right. If you, if you, if you condition the issuance of a permit on. Correct, on, on specific items.
Off-street parking is totally required.
Yeah, if you conditioned the permit on specific items and they were in violation, found to be in violation of those items. Then the, the conditions of the special use permit no longer apply. You could also, and, and I, I've uh seen this done as well. You could also um perhaps review this special use permit after a period of time to see whether there have been issues.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this application?
I have a question, please. So who's to say that this, this church is not gonna grow into like two or three hundred people? Who's to say? I mean, I mean, a lot of churches do get a following and weird mouth. And this church is gonna grab into two or three hundred people and we still have a parking issue.
We should have.
Or fire, we have a road issue, we have a fire issue, so.
My grave. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
My concern about safety.
Safety. Safety is the biggest thing here and I agree with you a hundred percent. Well, I'm not concerned so much as that. Now, that, that's not, please, no, that's not, it's the safety is the big thing. Okay, I'm gonna, just the board like to make a motion that we do a roll call vote on this application. And uh start with the uh. Dimensional variance first. Oh, special use only? Okay, I'm sorry.
Talk about conditions before, or would you like to see potential conditions? I would like to see, definitely, no, all park, no parking in the street at all.
No, I can't do that anyway. I can't. I can't park in the street.
There's nothing that says we can't install it into the.
Into the special use.
Yes. Uh, I would, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna get on board with that, I'd wanna see it all in writing.
Yeah.
No, that's what I mean, so I'm, I don't know. I'd almost rather vote on it as presented because we can, we can battle this back and forth, back and forth and back and forth. You know, I'd rather vote on it as presented. Do I have a motion on the floor to vote on it as presented? Mike's made a motion. I need a second, Lenny?
Second.
Second it, okay. I'm gonna start with a roll call vote of myself. I deny. Chair denies. Russ?
On its face value, I deny also.
Lenny?
I deny.
Keith?
Deny as, as shown.
Mike? Application's denied as presented. Okay. Okay, can I have uh new business?
New business is owner applicant, American Tree Service as applicant, Ingrid Frantinano as the owner. Location's A P three twenty, lot twenty-one, sixteen forty, Plainfield Pike, zone is R R five. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to use existing barn to store trucks, equipment and wood associated with residential tree trimming and removal company.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Is this microphone on? Guys, can I hear? Thomas Cronin. Nolan Bernero Cronin for our ten seventy Main Street Coventry, Rhode Island, for the owner and applicant. Uh, the owner, Ingrid Fratantwano, I, I believe.
That's how you say it.
And Bahab Fratantwano from American Tree are present here and, and available to answer the board's question. I'll make the initial presentation. Mr. Chairman, would you like to swear me in?
Please. Excuse me. You swear to that whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. May I proceed? Please, okay. So, um, as the clerk read, uh, the, this is a property owned by Ingrid Fratantwano. The applicant is American Tree Service, owned and operated by her son, Robert. Who also resides at the property sixteen forty Plainfield Pike and Green. Uh, it's A P three twenty, lot twenty-one. It's owned R five. Currently operated as Rocky Ledge Farm, where they grow and sell hay and blueberries. Lot twenty-one is forty-seven acres, but the farm also contains. Property in lot nine, lot ten, lot eleven, for a total of eighty-one point nine acres of land. Contiguous in nature. The uh property is set back uh from the roadway and only the driveway is visible from Plainfield Pike. The property has a single-family home on it with an adjacent garage and greenhouse. The resident's greenhouse and garage will remain in use by the owner. The surrounding properties are residential along Plainfield Pike, otherwise wooded and agricultural land. The eastern property line is the Mooseup River. Uh, Mr. Studley has brought up the, the map there. Um, the vehicle and utility connect, vehicle traffic and utility connections. Are through the driveway which exists to Plainfield Pike. So uh, there's a, quite a substantial driveway. Plainfield Pike uh up the hill into the property. Uh, that will remain and be the primary access. The applicant is American Tree Service. It's a residential tree, tree trimming, tree removal company. The company does not undertake commercial lot clearing or things of that type. Uh, currently has five trucks and eight men working. Started in two thousand nineteen, kind of ancillary to the farm use uh on the lot. But it has been growing uh since. And uh now is, is a pretty substantial operation and that's why we're here before you tonight. Because uh the activity is equal to or greater than the, the farming activity on the property. And they want this to be their home base. They recently added a uh, a fifth truck. A logging truck. It's, and it's uh quite a substantial vehicle. In fact, uh, when I visited, I was surprised by the uh, the size of, of these vehicles. I guess I'm more of a city boy than I, I'd like to admit. Most occasions, yes. And uh, uh, at the uh planning board meeting, I, I had uh incorrectly stated and assumed that the uh. The guys are driving these trucks home, but uh there's no, there's no neighborhood in Coventry that can support uh these trucks. And they are in fact stored up at the property. So the um. Right now, there's uh, the tree company is operating on the site. The uh, you can see right where that blue dot is, it's just coincidence, but right where that blue dot is. You can see the garage to below it into the left, that's the barn, they call it. It's a steel structure. Just over four thousand square feet, built in nineteen eighty-six. Used to be used primarily for farm equipment. Unfortunately, Mr. Fratantwano Senior, Senior had passed away. And the farming activity has been uh reducing over time. So not full of farm equipment anymore. We, we'd like to put some tree service uh equipment in there. So um, the, where the blue dot is, is a. Patch of land, I don't know how to describe it, an area of land. Behind the barn would be to the west of the residence. It's, is a gravel patch in, in the area of the land. That uh has two primary uh uses. That's where they bring the logs after they cut them down. That's where they're unloaded in that area. And in addition, uh, there's a wood chip pile. Um, in that area as well. So the business model here is not to store a great deal of wood on site or, or to. Uh, be a sawmill or, or things like that. They bring those boards uh to a sawmill. Um, they bring the wood chips to Old Castle to turn into mulch. But there's always gonna be some wood on that property and there's always gonna be some wood chips in that wood chip pile as, as it comes in. Goes out. Uh, I have learned that the recent addition of that logging truck. Has made uh what was a pretty backed-up situation over there a little less intense and they intend to keep uh working on that. The barn is located centrally, so the nearest property line to that barn is about three hundred feet, where that corner juts out on the southwest corner of the property. And the nearest house is about six hundred feet, which is also on that same property. That's the house right there. The barn is well outside of the R five setbacks for permitted, for other uses in the R five zone to the front of, of a hundred side of eighty five and rear of one fifty. The there'd be, so some, that's about what's going on right now, some things that are, are not gonna be added, right? Because this is a special use permit, it's about conformity, right? So no additional lighting. Well, there's no sign and we're not gonna put any sign out there. There's no retail customers on site.
How are you gonna be able to sell cut wood without a sign?
They're not going to sell cut wood. They, they truck it off, they truck it offsite.
But if they deliver fire burning wood, or what do you call it?
Firewood?
Firewood.
Firewood, they, they deliver, they deliver the logs offsite. There is the house.
So somebody, I can't go up there and go pick up logs from my fireplace?
That's right, you cannot.
Okay.
The, the, the barn, the garage, they call it, which is a smaller barn and the greenhouse and the actual house are heated by a pretty large wood burning furnace. And so there is some firewood collected onsite and stacked onsite, but it's for that purpose. It's, it's for the furnace, for the home greenhouse and the garage. So no, no retail customers, no sign. The, everything's gonna be wholesale and brought offsite. The, no additional exterior lighting. And the town ordinance has a specific ordinance for this type of activity that says that there'll be no activity between seven PM and seven AM. My client's aware of that, conforms with that currently and will continue to conform with that.
How about Saturday and Sunday? How about Saturday and Sunday? Excuse, I'm sorry. Saturday and Sunday.
The ordinance doesn't say anything about Saturday and Sunday. I believe they work on Saturday but not on Sunday, but if this board wants to add something to the current ordinance, well, it's just silent on that topic. The, John, is that correct?
He, yes, that's correct.
So they can operate on Sunday?
It, it doesn't say, one way or another, it doesn't prohibit the operation on a Sunday.
Does your applicant wish to operate seven days a week?
Well.
We're asking you.
Not the, not the wood, not the tree service, no. They, you know, like I said, there are other activities going on.
What other activities were going on like on Sunday?
Well, they, they're farming, they're growing hay, blueberries and the like.
But no tree activity on Sundays, is what you're telling me.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So, the a woodlot is allowed in R five zone with a special use permit, so the the application of the requirements of a special use permit include ingress and egress for vehicles will be over the, which will be over the existing driveway to Plainfield Pike, state highway. The location of the proposed use is away from the roadway, the property lines and neighbors. There's a storage and transitions area are hundreds of feet from the adjoining lots, so no additional shielding is necessary. There's existing utilities which will continue to be used. There are no homes visible, well, other than the home on the property for, from the barn or the gravel area. There's no, there'll be no sign installed, there'll be no initial lighting installed and all the R five dimensional area density setback requirements are satisfied. The proposed use is compatible with the current use of the property as a farm and the surrounding uses. It's, the use will not exceed the industrial standards that's set out in the zoning ordinance. And the granting of this special use permit will not result in conditions harmful to the public safety morals or welfare of adjoining lots, the neighborhood or the town of Coventry. This is really a, a use that has grown out of the use of this property as, as a farm and it won't drastically change the, the impact on the neighborhood in any way. Certainly won't be harmful. And we'd ask the board to consider approving the special use permit. If you have questions regarding the property, Mrs. Frattonano, the owner is here. If you have questions regarding American Tree, Bob Frattonano will be here to answer your questions.
So you're gonna run two businesses out of this location?
There's going to be continued use as a farm, yes, and then, right, the American Tree Service operation.
Okay, so is the farm service, you're not still, you're not gonna allow any public on site either, right? Or you are?
No, there's not, there's not, there's not a retail operation. For instance, there's not, also not a sign for the, the Rocky Ledge Farm. In years ago, when it was more active, they had a farm stand at the base of the driveway along Plainfield Pike. They're not undertaking that kind of activity any longer.
Equipment, yes, it says trucks, equipment, what type of equipment is it?
So, small equipment, chainsaws and the like, large equipment, chippers.
Top grinders?
I apologize, Mr. Glue, I, I'll check in my client on what a top grinder is.
The type of equipment he intends to start there.
I'll have, I'll have, yeah, sure. Bob, yeah, come on up. He, he can, he can help me and you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, give you a full name and address?
Full name is Robert Frattonano, sixteen forty Plainfield Pike.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Keith?
I just, it says the storage of trucks, equipment and wood. What type of trucks are, log trucks?
I have one log truck.
Stake bodies or?
It's a solid sites, that's actually.
Chipper trucks?
I have two chip trucks. And I, I have two bucket trucks. One of the bucket trucks is essentially a spare, it's the truck that I started my company with three years ago. The other chip truck is also essentially a spare, it's, we'd like to have backups so we're more consistent with our, with our workflow.
And the equipment?
Yes, we have two chippers that the company owns.
Those are towed units?
Yes, sir.
No top grinders?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else?
How, how long do you run the chippers?
Essentially, essentially not at all. No, so our, our business is going to people's individual homes and perform, you know, tree trimming and tree removal. That's, that's what we do in terms of what we, the farm is, is where I grew up, is where I park my trucks. The reason why we are doing this is, is at some point I would like to purchase my mother's property and I'm trying to add another level of legitimacy to my company. The farm is, is not what it used to be. It's, it's a significantly smaller business. When my father owned that company, he had sixty or almost seventy pieces of equipment. He had over a dozen employees, he had ten, almost ten thousand square feet greenhouse. It was a monstrous farm for the state of Rhode Island, he managed three hundred thirty acres. I operate my small company, the wood is stored in approximately a half acre area that we have essentially flattened out over the last, this past summer. We've made approximately sixteen inches deep of gravel around this area. The area is only for temporary storage of material, so we can move it. The log truck that we have recently acquired, which took over thirteen months to acquire, has made that tremendously easier now that we can sell log length firewood to the public. Again, all of it is not coming to us, this is my home, this is where I grew up. I don't really want the public there, it's just where I want to park my trucks.
The noise is minimized.
Say it again.
Noise is minimized.
Uh, yes, I, I've never had anyone complain about any noise. In terms of the trucks and stuff, we do have, no, no noise complaints at all ever, but what can be noisy is some farming equipment. But again, that is very minimalized. When we were making that gravel pad, that's something that maybe that was a little noisy, but that has, has stopped and that excavator that we had to do that is actually going to be for sale. So again, we're not in an excavation business, I have no interest in growing into that. I have no interest in to really adding any more heavy duty equipment. I just wanna be able to buy my family's farm.
Yeah. Could you address the chairman's question about operation on Sunday?
I don't work Sundays, it's hard enough to get, I have excellent help, I don't want my men working Sundays. Very, very rarely, we've gone out on emergencies or maybe just go do the cleanup, but I'm not go gung ho in a lot of that Sunday. Every now and then on a Saturday we, we will, especially if we have a rain day. I want my men to have at least forty hours a week, that's my job to make sure they are employed. So I take that very seriously. So we do, we'll work sometimes a half day on Saturdays, just to kinda make sure they have more of a consistent work week.
Okay, now.
A lot of essence on Sundays.
When you have, when you have a, like I go by many of the logging operations where they have a big machine that's cutting the firewood up.
I do have a firewood processor. There's essentially no money in the way that I do firewood, I don't really want to do firewood. I think it's a, a, just a byproduct of what we do. I barely break even on the fifty to a hundred core that I do per year. I essentially just do it for the local community, it's really just to help get rid of the byproduct. But again, now that we have that log truck operating, it's very quickly, easily and profitably move the firewood along. I really don't, the less we can touch it, the better it is.
So you cut them in long lengths and ship it out?
They're already cut in lengths when we take them off the job. So if we do a house, we, if we do a tree that is four feet from the house, the way that we do that, we break that down, so it's in smaller sections. So we're, we're doing the four, the six foot pieces of wood. You know, it's, 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 we don't have like truckload, a truckload, a truckload of super long, we're, we're not a logging operation. I do not have a fellow buncher, I do not have a harvester, I do not have a skitter. The margins in that business are, are terrible and we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the, the land to support that industry here. I'm not Benadryl that travels all over the place chasing those jobs, I don't wanna do that, it's blood money, I'm good.
Any other questions from boards?
I've got a question.
Sir.
So the land that you'd be doing this, it's that cleared area in the middle, basically dead center of your property, correct?
Yes, sir, to, to the left, north of left.
Okay.
We can go out and visit this?
If you, if you would like. You would actually have to ask the property owner, but.
You'd have to ask the property.
That's fine, yeah.
All the chips you generate on your job, they come back to your property?
Yep.
What do you do with them then?
We've hired, now that we have that log truck, that actually is a very specialty truck, we can actually dump, so we can haul them away.
The chips?
Yes, yes, sir.
In a log truck?
Actually, yeah, it's very interesting, they don't need about thirty months, I'm very proud of it, it's, it's really quite an accomplishment that we've been able to acquire that in such a short amount of time.
What do you do with the chips, where do they go?
Old Castle currently buys them.
What is that?
It's a mulch maker down in Wyoming, Rhode Island, off of exit three. We also have Paradigm as a company that they have trailers that we load and, or they actually load and they'll, they'll paint.
How long do they stay on site before you transport them off site? How long, roughly?
It could be.
Days, weeks, months?
It could be up to a few months. It definitely is in an isolated area, there's no, no trees in that surrounding area. Again, that's on a gravel pad, it's, it's really not near anything, it's not near any buildings, it's not near any equipment, it's not near anything that's plantable.
Okay.
How large is that pile that's stored?
I don't know the dimensions.
Tree size, size of you?
No, it's definitely taller than that.
Does it take up an acre, half an acre, hundred square feet?
The area that I work in, that we store things in.
Chip pile.
I, I don't know the dimensions, I could get them to you, but, but the area that we're currently storing that, that product in, or that, or those, that, that byproduct is probably about a half acre. So out of, you know, the eighty something acres.
Mr. Chairman, Bob.
Okay, wait, one minute. Okay, wait. Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, there's no other questions, do you have any other evidence you'd like to present?
Not this time.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to take a seat.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, I really truly appreciate it.
And anybody who would like to speak on this application? Mr. Beard, come up. Please give your full name and address.
Michael Baird, eight hundred Gibson Road, Coventry.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay.
In a nutshell, I don't believe that a tree service or a painting company or anybody else should be operating on a residential piece of property. It's a farm, cool, hey, got it with you. A tree service is a situation of thirty five years being in the tree business. You have to have fire control. If that, if you ever kicked an old pine log in a, in a fire, you kick that pine log and it does nothing but what, little cinders up in the air? When you take a pile of wood chips, can you put the pile of the pictures up for us, Chuck?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Beard, he provided photographs of the property, if it's okay with you all, I can share them now.
Where's our attorney?
For, for this case, Nick Gorm's office had a conflict of interest, so we have.
We have an attorney?
Correct, yes. Joanna Kelly, I'm the solicitor in foster, so I'm here for this matter and then one other.
Okay, all right, good. All right, well, how do you feel on this?
I did what John asked me to do, John had asked me.
Well.
Well, you asked me, come on, I don't wanna be able to talk.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to get the information from my attorney, okay, please, just wait.
Your zoning officer asked me for pictures, to produce pictures so you can show them at the meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk to John too.
So you can, I, I mean, have Mr. Beard testify as to when he took the pictures, if in fact, he personally took them, the date that he took them and then I would give the applicant the chance to respond and, or object as far as if you were gonna introduce him as a full exhibit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, I wanted to be able to show the size of the pile. And again, I'm not, if you decide to give permission for this gentleman, which I don't care if it's a tree company, I know I'm a tree company, he's a tree company. I have nothing against them, I have no, I have no interest, I'm a year away from being out of the tree business as we stand. But I've spent, and other people have spent thousands and thousands of dollars and came to this board and sat in front of some of the people that run this board. In regards to the fact that we wanted to run our business such as in Shady Valley, we were denied. We wanted to run our business in, in Hockney Hill Road, we were denied. Dave Schwartz, operating across from Sperm and Propane, came to this board, was denied, told he had to buy a piece of industrial property, commercial property. He had to supply his business with a piece of property that suited his business. I bought, I've got sixty acres out in the western end of Coventry, I bought eighty eight acres at the end of the road to stop a development from going through Gibson Hill Road. John Bernero and the other fellow, they were gonna put up nine houses and cut a through road through Gibson Hill Road. So I bought an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar piece of property to stop that from happening. I wanna live in the western end of Coventry, I don't have trucks in my yard, I don't have chips home, I don't have fire in my yard. I wanna live like that. I wanna live out in the western end of Coventry, I don't wanna have trucks and I don't wanna have signs in people's yards, I don't like any kind of signs. When they say they don't have a front sign in front of their yard, and again, this is not about a personal attack on these people, I don't even know them. I don't wanna see the signs. If you're gonna put up a sign advertising on the, on the internet, advertising on yellow pages, advertise where you do, Bob. Advertise where other people on this board, advertise your business. Where the rest of it, it's got a street sign in front of somebody's house saying, hey, I'm a tree company or a paint guy or whatever the case. That pile of wood chips, when he can't give you a size of how big it is, that is an enormous pile of wood chips and you're not moving that pile of wood chips with a, with a log truck. I don't care whose log truck it is or where they made it or how many they made. That pile of wood chips, and I'd like to have, I sent John a video of the fire, right? I have a wood chip pile in my yard, I have four loaders, I have two dump trucks, I have two Land Rovers and the only way, and Russell will sit here right there and tell you, the only way to put up, put out a fire in that pile is with a tub grinder. And two loaders with two people who now run. That pile gets out of hand, my house and everybody else's house up in that end is gonna suffer, right? You've never seen a wood chip pile catch a pile on fire. Where was it?
The TES.
The TES's pile burned for how long, Russ?
Twelve days.
Twelve days. And that was a stump pile, no equipment getting at it. Twelve days. And that was a stump pile. No equipment getting at it. They couldn't get at it. We've had a fire on Mr. Haynes's property out in western Coventry, right where, across from Cabo Go Park. We've had a fire out there. How do we, Russ? And how long did it take to get this one inch hose out to where the fire was?
Well, that wasn't a mulch fire. That was a brush fire, but still, it takes a while.
It was a ground fire. Just leaves on the ground from somebody's unput out campfire where there's a B and B at this point. Yeah, B and B, we were talking about it earlier. Sorry. Has nothing to do with this. But when you say that that amount of wood that's in that yard, when you say you're going to take it off site, cool. Where are you taking it to? Nobody's buying logs like that. No one's, I have no, no other choice but to make myself, first, Warwick Tree Service is doing it. Northeastern Tree Service does it already up in Cranston, Pontiac Avenue. The only way you can get rid of those wood chips is to make, turn yourself into a bark company, bark mulch company. So you have to have a tub grinder. You asked a question about a tub grinder. You have to have a tub grinder. If you don't have a tub grinder, that pile of logs and stuff and junk is going to sit there and rot like it did up at Franklin Air's lot.
When was that picture taken?
A week ago.
Week ago?
Yeah. It was on Sunday. Well, my, my pictures all have timestamps on them, so I just sent John what I had off my phone.
Did you take the phone trash?
I did, yeah. With a drone. And that's less than a mile, a mile and a half from my house. So if you look in the left, you zoom in on that, John, that where the excavator is. Stop, come out a little bit. Who's excavator is that? That's American Tree Service. So in nineteen ninety-one, the town of Coventry adopted with Kathy Laporte and Chuck Ricketts. And I adopted a ordinance that says if you have one log splitter in your yard, you're going to cut and split firewood for residents or a person, you personally have to have a special use permit, cut and split firewood, whether it's for your furnace, wood furnace or not. That's the town ordinance. There's a wood chip pile height requirement in the town of Coventry right now that says you cannot store wood chips. Any, any pile, mulch or anything else, any higher than twelve feet. That's the town ordinance as we speak. The wood chip piles on Reservoir Road that I had for years, I fought with Paul Sprague, I fought with Kevin McGee, I fought with Russ Ray Spear. Every town councilor came down that was trying to get on the town board was pointing their finger at me about how high my wood chip pile was. The ordinance in the town of Coventry today, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, the height of the wood chip pile can't be any higher than twelve feet. Regardless of this is the scenario here, it doesn't matter if it's here. The ordinance says it can only be twelve feet. The attorney that, I don't know where he went, but the attorney that stepped up here for, for tonight's microphone, he made comments about the fact that it wouldn't affect the area. When you come to work in the morning, those trucks roll out at a certain time in the morning. And when they start up, there's diesel fuel smell. And it's, and it drifts through the woods. Most of the time, all we have is weed out in the western of the Coventry because that's ninety percent of the way you can smell it there anyway. But in the morning, when you're, when that wind's blowing that way and looking at that picture through there, you can smell the trucks, you can smell, you can smell all of that stuff. So Sunday morning coffee out on the back deck, whether it's trucks moving around or rehooking or unhooking, this particular site has that situation. So A, the fact that you're not going to be able to move all that stuff regardless if you had two log trucks, that's an enormous site. And that site will only, as the attorney said, will only expand and get bigger. Those are his words. He said, this company went from a couple of trucks to five trucks. No tub grinder today, maybe tomorrow. It doesn't belong in a residential piece property in Coventry, Western Coventry. I had a house that burned down. I don't know if you're familiar with it. My house caught on fire four years ago. There was ninety-seven fire trucks. My house was on the street, right on the edge of the road. And the only thing we saved is the foundation. There's no water. It wasn't the quality of men because Bob, man, you won't ask for a better fire guy. Tell them, tell them. You won't ask for a better bunch of guys in the volunteer fire department anyway. Hands down, responsiveness, dependability, honesty, loyalty, pick one. That pile catches on fire, you'll never put it out. It'll be a lot more than eight to ten days. And you can tell them, Russ, because you know this stuff. You won't get enough water to that fire to put it out. You won't have enough equipment with that little tiny bucket. See that bucket? That's a one yard bucket. How many, how many yards of wood chips do you think are in that pile? Thousands.
We found out through years of experience that anything of this size, there's only one way to put the fire out. It has nothing to do really with water. It has to do with the fuel. So you'd have to take the fuel away from the fire. So you'd need several machines.
Not with an excavator bucket?
Probably not.
Yeah, I understand. As far as the tree clearing and land clearing, farming, okay, no big deal. That's part of life. Everybody out in the western Coventry should have a farm. It's the west end of Coventry. But if you're going to run a painting business, you're going to run a landscaping company, you're going to run a car business, whatever you're going to run, run an industrial piece property. Western Hopkins Hill Road's got lots of it. There's a bunch of it right behind the ducking building on Hopkins Hill Road. There's pieces for sale right down in the airport road past me. Bobby, Tommy Miosi's trying to get five hundred thousand piece. And then one last thing, and I'll sit down. I'm sorry. Take all this time. The last thing that is an issue for me is the fact that the taxes in this town, we pay thirty-six, I think it's thirty-six or thirty-eight percent more for industrial property. Bob, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's a piece of residential property. And he's standing in front of all that, that operation's been running there for the past three years. Thirty-eight percent on top of what they're paying already is a huge amount of money. So I don't mind paying my taxes. I don't mind being an industrial property because that's what I'm supposed to do. But I think we should all have the same plan. Because if we're going to give one person permission to run our residential property, I'm next. Thanks.
Okay, is anybody else who'd like to speak on this application? For, yes, ma'am, please come up.
Hi, Mary Morgan, seventeen eighty-seven Plainfield Pike. We live about five houses down from Bob.
I'm sorry, can you please state your address for the record?
Seventeen eighty-seven Plainfield Pike. Thank you.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
We have never had a problem. We have never had a problem with noise from his company. His drivers have all been respectful. We've never had any problem with any odors. He's done work for us. He's done a great job. I think that they're an asset to our community.
Okay, you live where?
Problem with it.
Right down, how far away?
Five houses, about five houses down.
Five houses down. On, on, you're facing-
Edinmore, Connecticut.
Yes. It's never been, there's no signs. He has no signs out there at all and never has, except when they sold plants for a short time.
Okay, but you've, you've heard him operate, run his equipment there?
I have never heard any equipment, not at all.
How about the diesel fuel? You smell the diesel fuel?
Absolutely nothing. Never.
And for how many years is this? You live there?
I've lived there for thirty some years.
Thirty some odd years. Okay, I thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this application? Please step up. Please give your full name and address.
My name is Gail Mitchell Slazak, seventy-nine Nicholas Road, Green.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I think this business is a good fit for our agricultural community. This is something you can't see from the road. It's not noisy. It's, it's taking care of our forest. We, you know, we have farming and we have forest. And this business is taking care of our forest. And I just think it's a good fit. There's a lot of other things that have been tried to put in green that are not a good fit, but this works. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please come up. Give your full name and address.
Ken Garreau, thirteen oh one Maple Valley Road.
I'm sorry, can you please spell your last name for the record?
Sure. It's G A R E A U.
And you said Ken?
Kenneth.
Kenneth, I'm sorry.
Okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
I've known the Fratton Twannos for better part of thirty years. I've had American Tree Service, worked on my property three different occasions. The family has always supported our community and I'm part of the community here back to support them. But it's a small business. It's a family business and it's a rural business. And it's something that we've got to support. There's just not enough folks taking care of the farmlands anymore, wanting to stay on their farms with their families, run businesses here in Coventry. And it's so important that we support our community and people like the Fratton Twannos who play that important role. So they've always given back to this community and to the community to do back to back.
Okay, anybody else here like to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Hi, Megan Hendricks. I am all-
Hit the mic up.
How's that?
Okay, you, full name and address?
Megan Hendricks, eighty-five Von Hollow Road, Green, Rhode Island.
Okay, now she raised her right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
We are, I believe, if you could pull that map up, lot thirty-one point one, we're just on the opposite side of the applicant's property. We're located in the hollow. We hear every truck that comes in, every truck that goes out. I'm concerned with the noise pollution created. I'm pre, I'm concerned with the amount of trucks and the expansion of their business, their operation there and the sound, the additional trucks coming in and out. From the photograph, one of the other folks showed with the logs and it's a pretty sizable operation. This isn't seen, and please, I'm seeking clarification, if, you know, this isn't one day coming in, in the morning, a truck coming in and a truck coming out. This is trucks coming in, out all day, right? All day, every day for what seems to be at least about six days a week. Potentially from eight o'clock in the morning to seven P M. So we're talking about eleven hours a day that we're going to hear this constant traffic back and forth. I'd like to understand sort of if there are any parameters that could be placed on this. I, I do want to support businesses in our communities. I do think it's really important. But I am concerned with the amount of sound that we're already hearing.
Okay, we can put restrictions on the time element of, of times of operation. As you heard, Ma, I was questioning about Sunday. He claims it's not going to work Sunday. The applicant didn't ask to work on Sundays. And asked, I believe, to work a half a day Saturdays.
Correct. Now, during the week too, through, through that timeframe from eight to seven P M is still wide open, correct? I'd also be concerned if we are putting some stipulations on that, if there's some sort of review that would be done annually, biannually, and what the community's recourse is, should something exceed that, do we have an opportunity to come back and, you know, address it with the applicants?
I think you're bringing up a good point that maybe this should go on a trial basis and let the community come back and speak on it to, if there is any problems.
Excuse me, whereabouts do you live from that picture?
Yeah.
Just don't touch the screen. Because it gets crazy.
If, if I'm correct, I believe we are right here.
Okay.
So, and, and because of their, the topography of it is much higher than us, we're much lower. So the sound just comes right through.
Okay, thank you. But that might be a good to have a review. Okay. Yes, sir. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Please come up. Give your full name and address, please, sir.
Eric Sabel, sixty-two eighty-five Flat River Road, Green.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Could you spell your last name for the record, please?
Z A B E L.
Thank you.
So I've known the Fratton Twannos family for a while as well. And I think that's been a great business and a great farming operation that they've had there. I think this is a relatively limited size and I think Bobby's got a good operation. I've watched as many, many trucks drive by where I live, right by the green fire station, and awful lot of them are discourteous. They downshift, they honk, it's loud. I see the Fratton Twannos trucks go by and they, they don't downshift. They're quiet. They're respectful of the community. It's just, it's, no matter where they are in the community, they're respectful of the people around them. I've worked in other areas around the town. And when they're in a, in a community or where they're in a neighborhood, it's not a nuisance. It really isn't. And I think that he probably operates similarly from his space. And if you, stipulations would probably be perfect, I'm sure they would respect that. Because they are that kind of family that would, would be careful about things like that. They care about their community.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
Give your full name and address. My name's Mike Brewer. I live at eight hundred Sisson Road and I run Broadwell Farm. I'm a farmer myself and of course-
I'm gonna ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I do want to say something about noise. I know sometimes farms are noisy. And I think one thing, yes, maybe there is noisy sometimes. They did do a little bit of bulldozing. But I don't think Bob is going to be running noise kind of much more than you would a bunch of Harleys going down fourteen. I hear Harley's going down fourteen and they make all kinds, you know, we live in green. I understand everybody wants quiet. But I think the most annoying thing, and I've got one, you know, a Harley, and it's noisy and we're noisy people. But the thing is, what I think about, I, I counted like, I think there's seven farms left. And I'm just thinking this is a good fit for our community to support farm. I do hay. They do hay up there. They, they do blueberries. I would like to see them get back into doing vegetables. And this is part of supporting the farm. And it's hard to support a farm these days. The taxes and everything, it's, I think on our farm, it's like almost thirty thousand dollars, twenty-seven thousand for our little farm. And ours is a little bit bigger than theirs, but it's just tough to have farms. And I just think we need to support the farms, you know? Just especially the way that things are looking right now where food plants are burning up and we need to support these farms. That's, that's what I have to say. And they're great people and, and they'll be respectful to the community. If there's some noise, they'll, they'll do all they can do to keep, keep the noise level down. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Deb Lascalia. I live at seventy-nine Von Hollow Road.
Can you spell your name, last name for the record, please?
L A S C A L E I A.
I'm sorry, L A.
S C.
Yep.
A L E I A.
E I A.
So I-
I'm sorry, and then your address?
Seventy-nine Von Hollow Road.
Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I live at seventy-nine Von Hollow Road. So I'm, I'm down in the hollow as well. I know that we've been there a short period of time. I've been there for about three and a half years. And I know that American Tree Company is very respectful and they're important to the community from what I've learned in the few years that I've been here. The only reason I asked to speak is because I was concerned about noise because down in the hollow, anything that's up on the ridge comes down. And, you know, we work from home, so there was a lot of noise at some point. The only other thing that I ask is, we are very concerned about potential fire issue and would just ask American Tree Service if potentially there would be some sort of a plan in place. If there were a fire, how that would be handled because down in the hollow, we, we don't really have any water source. There's no, there's no water if our home's caught on fire. So for being just a mile away, if God forbid anything happened, there isn't really that much room between us and them. So I just didn't know if there would be a possibility of having any sort of a fire mitigation plan, if there were going to be a large amount of chips stored on the property.
If it's possible, we will have, we do have some internal fire advice. And we could, we could, you know, research that and, and check on it.
Okay. And again, I just, I know it's, I'm excited about being in the community and I do feel that the farms need to be supported. And it's very nice to, to have a young man that wants to stay and, and keep the family farm going. I just wanted to, I just addressed the concerns, but based on what I'm hearing, I think that they'd be more than happy to try and, 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 you know, work out a plan so that we have some answers. And if we would have the opportunity to review the plan and, and be informed about it, that would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, we will continue the meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody, yes, sir, please come up.
Stephen Morgan, seventeen eighty-seven Plainfield Pike, Green, Rhode Island.
Raise your right hand, sir. Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. Thank you. I just wanted to talk about Bob for a second, his character and his ability to be respectful for, for the community. I'm retired. I'm in the, I'm in the area, I'm five, about five houses down from him west. And he, I see him most mornings heading out. him most mornings heading out, takes his trucks, he heads out, he's gone. Occasionally, he runs a truck in, and he runs the truck back out. He's not there. He's off doing a job, he's off helping somebody get some dead trees down that might wreck their house or something like that. He's a good man, is all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this application? Gonna make it real quick, Mr. Dill. And don't repeat what you're.
I don't want anyone at this meeting, all right? I have no, I don't think I've ever met the young man, and I have nothing to question his integrity, his honor, anything like that. This is a fact of the matter. It's, and it, three people came up and mentioned the fact that we're talking about keeping it in the community, it's good for the area. It's a business, he employs employees, it has equipment that's registered for a business. A business belongs in a business piece of property. That's the way it was made, that's how it's always been, that's how you've done it, we've all done it. Understanding how old he is, I started the same way, I was in Shady Valley, I started the same way, did the same things, came and asked permission, denied, 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 ended up where I am. So maybe denying him today will put him in a position five, 10, 15 years from now, he'll have a truck, 30 guys, so have multiple companies, okay? But they belong on an industrial piece of property, not a residential property. The last thing I want to say about the fire thing, you will not have enough fire suppression there, so we can all stay and live five, six houses away, which is great, but when your house burns down, and everything you own in it is gone, because you came tonight and said, hey, let's put a business with no fire suppression on a piece of property that has no way of getting enough fire trucks up that road to handle the amount of fire that's going to come from that thing. If you came to my, you want to see it, I can show it to you. I have fires, I have a fire right now inside my woodchip pile, right now, it burns all the time. If you have a firewood pile on Reservoir Road with John's, John's dad will have the same, has the same problem. It's a constant issue. If you let it get away from, if you let it get away from you, and you don't have the equipment to handle it, it'll be very bad. This is not a personal attack. I have multiple houses, I have multiple things out in Western Coventry, I don't want them destroyed with a fire again. So that's the only reason I'm here. This is not a safe location to have a tree service of this size.
All right.
Nothing, of course.
Okay, okay. Anybody else would like to speak on this application? Yes, sir, please move. Don't repeat what everybody else has said, please.
Well, my name's Jeremy Pomfret, I live on 6803 Flat River Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this?
I do.
Okay.
So I just would like to reiterate that Bob and his family, they're very community friendly, you know, they're always willing to stick their neck out for just about anybody, really. And my house is actually, it's the same as everyone else, about five houses down, about a five-minute drive. I've never once heard any excessive noise, or any smells, or diesel fumes, or anything like that, really. And I think they're a great asset to this community, you know? There's not too many professional companies out there nowadays, and Bob and his company, they're honest, they're fair, they're very professional, and they're just trying to do things right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you want to go stand up? Please give your full name and address.
Yes, Robert Healy, 607 Weaver Hill Road in Coventry.
Raise your right hand, you swear to tell nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. I just like to say that I've visited this property on several occasions, I'm one of the volunteers that helps pick blueberries on the site, to help support this, you know, small family business, and to try to keep this type of use in the town, and wouldn't want to see, you know, the fact that if it's denied, what could happen to this property if they can't keep this type of an operation going, where you might see, you know, subdivisions, solar wind turbines, some crazy use that you wouldn't want. But this is a good use, and it's a professional use. I've never seen an operation run more professionally. They did a major operation at our property back last year, while we were restoring from our house fire. And again, the operation is incredibly professional.
All right, does anybody else like to speak on this application? Yes, sir, please come up. Again, I'm going to ask you not to repeat what we've already heard, for testimony. Please give your name and address.
David Hankins, 556 Lewis Farm Road, Green.
Okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. My concern is, again, that, as Bob said, what if we have a developer come before the board, wanting to do a cluster development, or some sort of building development which takes a farm away from Green, and then is gone? Then we still have the same problems of many, many children coming in here, and tax burden for our school department. We need, we need rural land at Green. We're losing too much of it. Now, if this board's going to have a problem with that woodchip pile, at least let the young man, you know, give you some ways to be, maybe he doesn't store woodchips on that property, but to have some trucks up there making some noise is no reason to deny him this application. Thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am? I'm going to ask, give your full name and address.
Deborah Fisher, 12 Airport Road, Coventry.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
Excuse, I'm sorry, can you please spell your first and your last name for the record?
Yep, Deborah, D E P O R A H, Fisher, F I S H E R.
Thank you.
I have had American Tree Service do work on my property two times in the last three years, and I just want to say that Bob is incredibly reliable and honest, and gave a fair price for the work that he did. When he knew that I'd had an emergency, he was contacting me to see if I needed him to come out at, you know, 10 o'clock the next morning after we'd had a lot of wind, and he's just been a great asset to the community. And I don't want to see anything denied with the attitude of, we'll make him stronger if we deny this now. And I don't understand why this doesn't fit in with the purpose of having agricultural land out in Green. It seems like it fits perfectly with that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this application? Yes, ma'am? Please give your full name and address.
Ingrid, Fred and Tuna, 1640 Plainfield Pike, Green.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I want to add to what's being said. My husband and I had a farm with all kinds of things going on, and I lost my husband. So I had to get a different job, but at that time, we still had equipment. My husband, to keep our farm going, started a farm tree business, so that during the winter, he could do storms. So this is not a new business. This is a business that Robert learned from his dad when he was in high school. We had bucket trucks on the property, in addition to the farm, the tractors, the plows, everything. So we are now, it is now getting a little bigger with Bob doing it. He will keep it small, because I'm still there. I'm still doing blueberries, I sell at the farmers' markets, I raise hay, but to me, he's just asking to be sure, as we're hoping to transition the farm to him, that there won't be someone coming in and asking him to say, sorry, this is, this is gone, we want to keep it a farm, we want to keep it rural, the concern with the woodchips, it has taken him a long time to get the truck on order that he needs to move those chips out. He's in the process of moving the chips out, and a small backlog of those logs, he's moving them out, but we couldn't do it until he got that truck. I do feel that Bob will address the problem of the sound that's going down into the hollow, and he will do what he can do to try to, you know, not make it something that's obnoxious to anybody. We love our farm, we love the rural nature of our farm, and we would like to try to keep it that way, and continue to be a good addition to this rural community, as we always have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't see anybody else's. Yes?
Two officers.
Okay, sure, please.
Mr. Jim, is that me?
Well, no, we're coming on, people coming in. No, we're.
Who else?
Huh?
That's Tom.
Please speak up and let me know who you are.
Anthony Nardolillo, 10 Colby Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island.
Okay, and I'm going to have to sway you in, is there a?
Trying to see if I can get the camera up. I can't get a camera up, Mr. Crow.
Let's see if he's going to do it. Okay, I'm going to have to sway you in. Please raise your right hand. You swear, you swear to tell nothing but truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'd just like to quickly circle back to the last application that you had, where it was running a commercial business out of a residential property. That's a concern that I have, I think it's the same exact case. It's a commercial business, it's there to make money, in my opinion, has nothing to do with the farm, and it should be treated as such, it should be in a part of town that has space for local business. I don't think it should be run out of a residence, nor do I think any business should be. Residents are residents, and the residents of district out there with the residential five, that they want it that way for a reason, and I think it kind of goes against what a lot of people in that area want. Even though you have people up there speaking tonight in favor of it, if it was a gas station that was trying to open up out there, the whole western end would be up in arms. So that's just my thing, that I wanted to point out, that it is a commercial business running out of a residential piece of property, and it, the same way you talked about the church, I think you should look at this piece the same way. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next individual?
Hi, my name is Kenneth Dill, I live at 1555 and 1560 Plainfield Pike.
Okay, can I get a picture?
I haven't been able to find the menu on my phone here to allow me to. There we go. Hi, are you able to see me?
Not just quite yet, I think it's going to take a couple of minutes. You have to turn your camera on, sir.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask you to give your full name and address again?
Yes, my name is Kenneth Dill, I live at 1555, 1555 and 1560 Plainfield Pike.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, what would you like to bring up, sir?
Well, I, my property is between the Fred and Tuanan's property and Plainfield Pike. And honestly, the only time I am aware that their trucks are driving adjacent to my property and up onto their property is when my dog barks at the trucks, which is only if he's outside. The sound has not bothered me in the least. I visited the site in the last few days, and was satisfied that, both that there are no plans to expand in a way that would increase the sound, and that's, they have no expectation of creating any light pollution that would be, would interfere to my enjoyment of my property. So I, from a personal point of view, my wife and I have no qualms about their use of the property as stated.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Can I even put that sound?
Yeah, I'm going to have your attorney come up, please. Mr. No.
Is there anybody else?
I believe there's nobody else, no.
I want to come out. So, I think that perhaps we underemphasized the way that we anticipate that we're going to use this property and run this business. So I think the, Ms. Hendricks, who lived on Von Hallow Road, talked about maybe some parameters and some stipulations, and I think that you're going to find that Bob is going to be agreeable to not have explosive growth of the number of trucks, employees, trips, piles, you know? This is an operation that he has in mind at a limited size, that it's going to be run in conjunction with the farm and on the farm. So I, to say that he's going to have 30 employees or anything like that, is not what he intends to do. And I think that, you know, you wanted to put some parameters on this, I don't think either one of us knew that there was an ordinance regarding the size of the mulch pile. Certainly, we're going to comply with the town, you know, regulations, the size of our mulch pile, and I welcome the idea of periodic review. I have, I have that kind of confidence that this business is going to be run the proper way. So with that in mind, I don't know if, how you describe the limit of a future business, but this is, this is a concept I have, that, you know, maybe it's by the number of trucks, or the number of employees, or something like that, that, you know, we can't exceed without coming back before this board, right? This is, this is an approach that we use in all the situations, right? You know, you can't grow more than this without coming back to get further permission. Sure, I didn't know until tonight, and I know that the Fred Tuanan didn't know until tonight, that the folks at Von Hallow have a problem. And, you know, well, that's something we'll have to work on, I think. I don't really know, I mean, it's already a really big piece of property in that direction, towards Von Hallow, but I don't want to, I just want to emphasize to the board that we're looking at to run a small, professional, and as Bob has said, profitable tree service company. We're not, we're not looking, you know, to expand greatly in the way that Mr. Barry referenced as a possibility. So, the, Mr. Crow mentioned that the board might like an opportunity to come up and.
I would like to come up and take a look at it, and what I will do is I will have Carrie call up and let you know what day I'll come up, and any other board member would like to do the same thing. We will, instead of you having a bunch of us call, Carrie will be the only one who'll call, all right? And we will go through her and make the appointment.
So, well, I did want to let Bob have the final word on my commentary about, you know, the way that he wants to run this business before we do that, so go ahead and address it.
What I was going to suggest was, how many trucks are you going to need in the next 10 or 15 years? The next 10 to 15 years, what's your goal on equipment? I'm, I don't want that now. I'm going to have you submit that. I'm gonna have you submit that list to the board.
I, I can, I can tell you now.
No, you can, no, I'd rather you submit it. And that way there we know exactly. And then I need to know what you would submit in twenty-five years, thirty years. What would be your total max? That's what I'm gonna need. I need one for ten years and one for a max. Board agrees? I want a business plan.
I can most definitely provide that.
Okay.
If you want.
And not just trucks, I mean, I mean employees, the whole, the whole operation. Like, like Mike just said, a business plan. I need a ten-year plan, and then I need a maximum.
I'm actually, would you like to comment a little bit on it or?
No, no, I'd rather you submit it, submit it in writing. All right, and I suggest we're gonna continue this meeting to the next Wednesday and.
The date is June first.
June first.
The, the, those chip pile and the unsellable wood. What timeframe, how, how long would it take you to get that stuff off the property?
Essentially, none of it is unsellable.
Chip pile.
Just check to make sure it's on.
Can you hear me now? How's that? All right. How much time? Well, so.
It's a big pile. What do you think?
It, it, it's gonna take, it's gonna take several months. And the reason being is that when I ordered that truck to, to move this material, um, this was during the pandemic.
Have you moved any material with the?
Positively, positively. Actually, one of the pictures that was so kindly provided, was a huge section of that was actually all mill logs that has been prepped. And since then, several loads have gone out.
I'm talking about the chips.
The, the, yes, the chips will take, this is gonna take a few months.
Chips with the new truck?
I, I most definitely can, yes. Um, no, not as of yet. That excavator that was sitting there, actually, we're, we're waiting on some parts for that. So once we have that operational, we can easily move. That's actually one of the reasons why that chip pile looks a little bit bigger than it actually kind of is or could be. Those are a bunch of little piles from my trucks. So over the course of, of the day, we may bring our two truckloads of wood chips in from our jobs, and we dump them, and then we'll push them up so it's contained. Um, the other thing, if I would, if I would, if you would like me to, I would love to address the, the fire, potential fire issue. This is one of the reasons why maybe Von Hall has heard some excessive noise, because last summer we, we made an area of usable, that's, that's super flat, that's approximately sixteen inches deep of gravel. So it's, it drains beautifully. It's, and you can get trucks in there. We also have a crushed asphalt driveway for about half of the property. And then we have the other half going back to that pile is again sixteen inches deep of, of gravel. So my trucks can go on it, fire trucks can go on it. I made it, that entire area is all sitting on gravel, so really a fire couldn't spread. The other thing to take into consideration is that that river is, is not too far away, where if you needed a water source, I know someone said that maybe you couldn't use that to put a fire out, but if you, the fire department was looking for one, the river is right there. And that river does not run dry. The whole time I've been there, I've never seen it dry. So it's something else that maybe, that we have actually thought about, and it's one of the reasons why I think there may have been excessive noise last summer. And I'm very sorry that we did that. But in terms of our trucks, we may have a chip truck once or twice a day return to add wood chips to that wood pile. But our, our five trucks that we currently own, the, the log truck may be hauling now, getting the logs out of it, get caught up from the backlog that we have. But our other trucks, on a typical day, American Tree completes one to three tree jobs. I have two trucks that are essentially backup trucks. They really just sit there in case we have a breakdown with our other trucks, we can continue to work. So those two trucks essentially are parked. Then I have a newer bucket truck and a newer chip truck that are primary trucks. That's what we're in every day. And, and they're not really necessarily back and forth on the farm, that once the bucket truck leaves for the day, it doesn't come back until a job is completed. So, and, and so maybe that may help the noise, and, and I'm not sure if that's some of the noise complaint that you, that you were hearing, so.
Well, you have to, you have to address the board.
I'm sorry. Yep, sorry about that.
Okay, okay. Oh, Zach, my turn. Yes. So up until now, I didn't realize you had such a monstrous pile of chips. I didn't know you had chips there at all. As Mr. B had alluded to, we've had some problems in the past with storage of wood chips on properties and catching fire and so on and so forth. The one that he, the one that he talked about back, it was several years ago, we actually had a ton of water and we still couldn't put a fire out. We ended up that we brought big machines in to separate the fuel from the fire. Water worked fine, but that wasn't gonna work. He talked about the level, the, the height of the piles. When I was chief, it was sixteen feet. Wind rose. I guess it's been changed to twelve. I'm not aware of that, but twelve's even better. But you gotta cut it down and, but you gotta get rid of it. That's the biggest thing.
Yes, sir.
When Mike had his business on Reservoir Road, one of the few people that he didn't argue with was me. And we had a good relationship. I went over, I told him what my, what my concerns were, and he took care of it. Basically, one of the things he was doing is he was shipping rough out of state, and they were using it for fuel, I believe up north somewhere. But that's a big concern for the fire department. Yes, we have the river at the bottom of the hill, and, and it's at the bottom of the hill. Yes, we could, we could, you know, with a little bit of Yankee engine, we could get that, we could get the job done. We don't wanna have that problem to start with. So as soon as you could get rid of the pile, that would be paramount in my plan, in my part. Uh, I know that the chief and the captain, Bob Mann, I'm, I'm a member of the Western Conference Fire Department, so one of the senior staff, and, and we didn't know that you had a big pile up there. It does concern us, but I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna lose sleep over it. Like you said, it's surrounded by dirt. It's, where's it gonna go? The problem is, fire that we had burnt for twelve days and produced, we had complaints with everybody that was, was around us, you know, about the smoke. All over the valley. One, one lady came to us and she was, you know, she was upset because her horses, you know, were in the, were in the pasture and they were breathing in all the smoke. And I just looked at her and I says, well, don't let them outside. I mean, you know, it's one of these things, but probably I could have done it a little bit better finesse, but you know, she comes up and, and everything's going wrong in the middle of the week, and then, and I, so I said, man, just get them out of the smoke. But anyways, that's another story for another day. We, you need a, a fire contingency plan?
Okay.
Based on this, and, and I, and I know you've got a member of your family that's got a clue about that whole thing. Your brother, he's, he used to be a member of our department, great guy. The, those are my concerns. Accessibility doesn't seem to be a problem. We, we've had our trucks up to your, up to your facility a couple of times. Rescue keeps up there, no trouble. The pumper's gonna get up there, the tanker. And accessibility down by the bridge to access the water, that's not a big deal. And actually, I believe that driveway goes up to your, it's like a second, secondary driveway goes up.
There are multiple access.
If worst came to worst, you know, we could, we could get it done, but we would rather not do that. So I've always been a big proponent of, of, you know, safety first, and, and those are our concerns. As far as the other part of it, I, I know your reputation. I've, I've heard nothing but good things about your company. But it still presents the same problem. Whenever we have a large amount of wood chips or, or, or firewood or so on and so forth, it, it creates a problem. And, and it's a nightmare for the fire service. And unfortunately, in some cases, our hands, our hands are tied on it. And i- if we can talk to a live person and make things better, that's, that's where we wanna be. So that's my concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Are we allowed to ask the fire department a question regarding the fire department?
You can, you can ask that directly to the fire department. All right, at this time here, we're gonna continue this meeting to next month. June first, you said?
June first at seven P M.
Seven P M.
One question.
Yep.
When you do the business plan, add a process plan as well.
Does I say it again?
A process plan.
Process plan?
To your business plan.
Okay.
In words, you bring in the material, you're gonna have it so high, you're gonna exit the material.
Absolutely. How thorough of a plan would you like? I, I actually. Because, okay, I can do that. Not a problem. I, I actually, my degree is in entrepreneurial management. I also have a degree in economics. I can most definitely do that for you.
Okay, if there is nothing else, I'm gonna.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We.
Continue.
Continue this till next month and come back with the.
Information.
Second information, yes.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mike. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, we'll see you here next month. Thank you.
Next owner applicant is Mark Perry. Actually, he's the applicant. Cassandra Perry is the owner. Location is AP 323 Lot 18920 Allison Avenue. Zone is RR3. Applicant is seeking a special use permit in dimensional variance to construct a fourteen by twenty-four garage in the yard, five feet from the side property line where fourteen feet is required, and twenty-five feet from the front where forty feet is required.
Is the applicant here, please?
Yes, Mark Perry. It's my daughter's house. I live on eighteen Allison Avenue, Coventry. And the property we're talking about is twenty. They're budding properties.
Okay. Chairman, I'm gonna butter, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay, I thank you for that. Okay. Okay, now. All right, you. All right, who's the owner of the plant?
My daughter Cassandra.
Cassandra, okay. And you're gonna be putting your landscaping business there?
No, lawnmower shop. I own, not a landscaping business. No, uh, my, my elderly father lives there with her, and he's gonna park his car in the garage.
Okay, so there's no business gonna be run out of this location whatsoever?
No, no, not at all. It's a fourteen, it's a single car garage, no.
I know, but I hate to put it this way. Some of the landscapers are famous for fitting anything that.
Yeah, I'm not a landscaper.
I know you're not.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so you wanna put out of the dish?
So as you drive down the road, when it first starts, as you take the turn off of Whitman, the houses are very close to the road. My lot is, my lots are set back from the road. The houses are set back. Or the garage would be pretty much even, if not a little further back than the houses as you turn onto the street. Um, I do have pictures, but I didn't submit them.
Up a damn, man.
Johnson's.
Maple Valley Road, fifty-four Maple Valley on the right.
All right, some reason I told us.
Oxy lives down there. Oxy and.
Okay, all right, all right. So, like, okay, I should have caught it when he said he wanted to step down.
Dr. Maynard.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, yep.
The Perrys.
Yep. It is.
All right.
They're fifty-foot wide lots. So the reason why I wanted it close to the side, I know the setback, I believe you said was fourteen.
All right, and you're gonna make it smaller than the other one?
The shed that's there?
Yeah.
No, the shed that there's a little bit smaller than the garage. But the shed that's there is one foot, no, I'm sorry, three foot from the boundary line. And we're gonna put it five foot from the boundary line, so we're gonna move it a little bit more.
You're gonna move a little bit over.
So it's gonna be actually an improvement. The shed is, is definitely an eyesore, and it kind of faces the wrong direction. This would exit towards the street, the shed, which is.
So you're gonna put up a brand new shed?
Brand new garage.
That's your presentation you, you set up, right?
Yep, I think they got it here.
You got a picture you can put on the? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yep.
Okay. The reason why I would like it left of the property is because if it was to the right, it would block the house. This would look like it's supposed to be there. If it's on the left.
Okay, also, he's coming in front of us because it's in the front of the property, correct?
Correct.
So there's nothing there now?
There's a shed there. I have a picture. I have several copies of it. I know it wasn't submitted ahead of time of what it looks like. I could have a copy for everybody if, if that's.
If you got that, yeah, if you could submit that. You can pass it on. Just give one to everybody.
So this is the house, as the house, as the street begins, that's how close they are to the street, just so you don't get.
I do like things nice, so it'll look good. Doesn't look good now. That shed is an eyesore.
Okay, yeah.
When you're on the water, I know it's the craziness of the front yard.
It's gonna be bigger than what you got now, right?
About by two feet, yeah.
Two feet. Can you stake it out so I can actually see it? Yep.
And the driveway's big enough, being fifty foot, that you can still get a fire truck past the garage and get right up to the house if you wanted to. We're gonna make a driveway there, so I definitely could stake it.
All right, you stake it out and we'll all take a look at it. Does anybody else have any questions on this application? Seems pretty simple. Would you like to take a seat and I'll see if anybody else would like to speak on this application? Is anybody here that would like to speak on this application? I have a question on the application at all. Okay, I suggest we take this under advisement, rent decision within a reasonable time. We will continue this to first.
June first at seven P M.
June first at seven P M. All right, we have a motion on the floor for that.
So moved.
Okay, Russ has made it. Keith the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Any nays? Ayes have it. Okay, thank you very much for coming, Mr. Perry.
Mr. Chair, one matter of business I forgot to mention earlier is the application of Kirsten's from Uly. Nineteen twenty Victory Highway needs to be continued to June first, twenty twenty-two at seven P M due to the fact that they did not send out proper notice.
Okay, is anybody here for that application? Okay, I guess we don't have to worry about that one.
The next owner applicant is Steven Chiappa. Location is AP 610 Lot 1212 Hill Farm Camp Road. Zone is RR2. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct an eight by fourteen addition on the rear of the house.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Bevallot, Robert Searcy Bevallot, located 145 Cranston, Rhode Island. Mr. Chiappa is to my left.
Okay, I'm gonna, you gonna give testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna give both, swear you both in the same time. Give you full name and address, sir?
Steven Chiappa, 12 Leopunk, Tampa, Rhode Island.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth from this board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm seeking a special use permit to construct an eight by fourteen addition to the rear of the dwelling. Location of this dwelling is called Hill Farm Camp Road. Access is plat six ten lot twelve, zone RR2. As you can see, maybe on the pond side, we're seeking relief from, there's going to be an additional eight feet course. The setback line, nothing on either of the side setbacks, if you know. Uh, this addition will not affect ingress, degress, pedestrian or automotive safety. Utilities are all pre-existing. The neighborhood, it's gonna fit identically to all the houses in the neighborhood. The farm was not created by my clients. It was a pre-existing non-controllable use. Purchased the property that way, just needs to make the kitchen a little bit bigger to obviously as a growing family.
Okay, my only question was here, do you own the property?
I do, yes.
Then why do you have a lease?
I don't have a lease anymore. May I address that?
Please.
So most of these properties were leased land, as we all know, for the long time by the mills. They have begun, I believe, don't quote me on the percent, about halfway through converting all these to condos. So there are private, it is private ownership for a lot of these properties now. I've actually done, I want to say the last year or so, six, closing myself with the conversion from condo from leased land to condo.
Okay, okay, so that, so the lease really means nothing?
No.
Just, okay, all right, that's it. All right, so this is your property. This way you, I'm gonna have your family, and you wanna go for eight feet closer to the pond?
Eight feet, yes, by fourteen feet. The fourteen feet. The fourteen feet with uh, laterally is within the existing structure.
You're not really doing very much, to be honest with you.
It's, I, I've seen closets bigger.
Yeah, exactly.
I know.
You know, so.
My wife still couldn't fit all the shoes in that.
I'll see if the board members have any questions, any other questions of this. It does look straightforward, yeah. It really does. Russ?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me see if there's anybody here in the audience that would like to speak against it or just have a question on it, okay? Is anybody here to like to speak on this application and just have a question or anything at all? Anybody? Okay, I guess nobody's here. Um, I suggest we vote on this tonight and, okay, well, I need a motion, motion made by uh. Seconded by Keith, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, nays, no nays, okay, we're gonna vote on this tonight. I'm gonna start with a roll call vote on this one here. Mike Newell, how do you vote on this one? Russ, approve. Uh, Keith?
Approve.
Lenny?
Approve.
Russ, approve. Okay, application is approved as presented.
The next applicant in order, Alan Lemake. The location is AP seventy lot seventy eight twenty five Breezy Lake Drive. Zone is RR twenty. Applicant is seeking a special use permit to construct an eighteen by eighteen carport, sixteen feet from the side property line where twenty six feet is required and seventeen feet from the rear property line where thirty is required and a dimensional variance for lot coverage relief.
Okay, is the individual here?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, uh, Mister Chairman, good evening, board. My name is David Dubain. I reside at eleven Gentry Farms. Swear to tell the truth tonight in front of the board.
Okay, I gotta ask you, your name, sir?
I'm Alan Lemake, twenty five Breezy Lake Drive.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. So who's the applicant?
Mister Lemake.
Okay, and you are the.
I'm the general contractor.
You're the general contractor, okay. So you want to put on a carport right over the stairway?
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chairman, uh, we would like to construct an eighteen by eighteen open post and beam carport, uh, which would be built on the side of the home.
Yep.
Over the driveway area that's there now, the existing driveway. And that carport, the roof system would uh, continue from the eighteen by eighteen over a six by ten foot deck, which is already existing on the side of that house. So the roof would also cover that uh, to avoid uh, any type of difficulty during bad weather, when they park their cars and walk into the home.
All right, so you're gonna remain sixteen feet from the property line?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman.
And they're required, John, to remain what, twenty? His property line requirements are for a dimensional variance.
Yes, so um, in this case, um, he needs twenty six feet from the side property line and thirty feet from the rear property line, and she's proposing.
He needs twenty six feet.
That's correct.
So he's gonna be short ten feet?
Correct.
Okay, I'm looking at sixteen feet as still a, quite a bit of land. Um, everything over there in that breezy lake side is kind of tight. Um. It's not gonna be any taller than the existing house, that's gonna be shorter. Uh, and the whole thing's gonna be shorter than the provided plans. Uh, it's only gonna be seventeen feet long.
That is correct, Mister Chairman.
Okay, um, it's all gonna be constructed out of wood with, with uh, concrete footings, correct?
Uh, yes, uh, Mister Chairman, again, the uh, post and beam structure will be built directly over the existing driveway. It won't be any wider or any bigger than where they normally park now. It won't have any impairment or any uh, adverse effect on the surrounding community. It's also built as a low-profile structure, which is open on all sides. Uh, so it's not blocking anyone's uh, you know, view from street level. You can actually see through, it's actually kind of up where the house is.
Okay, let me see if any board members got any questions. Mike?
Excuse me, sir? Asphalt shingles. Same as the house. Keith?
You got anything?
I do not. It's pretty straightforward.
How about you, Russ?
I'm good.
I'm good. It, it is pretty straightforward.
Yep.
I have no complaints with it whatsoever. Uh, things are tight over in that area, that breezy lake area. Um, but you're still gonna be sixteen feet, plenty of room left over from the property line. Uh. I, I suggest we vote on this, make a motion to vote on this tonight? Oh, I'm sorry, good thing you called me. Uh, take a seat, please. I wanna see if there's anybody here that would like to speak on this application.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Please. Please give your full name and address.
Marilyn Smith, nineteen Breezy Lake Drive.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay.
I wanted to say that I live directly across the street from them and I have no objection to having that go up there.
Oh, I thank you for coming forward. Okay, thank you. Is somebody else, I think there was another person that wanted to speak. Was there somebody else wanting to speak on this application? Okay, uh, since it's nobody else, Mister Chairman, I make motion to the board aside. Okay, motion made by Russ, seconded by Mike. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, nays, ayes have it. Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, start with Russ. Russ, how do you vote on this application? You approve?
Yes.
As presented?
As presented.
Lenny?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
Approve as presented.
Russ?
Approve as presented.
Approve as presented.
Approve as presented, okay. Application is approved as presented.
Next application is Jaclyn Bakari, trustee of the J and J Bakari Family Trust and Michael and Amanda Varia. Location is AP ninety nine lots six point one, six point two and seven and three three six Hope Furnace Road, three three, three four four Hope Furnace Road, three four four R Hope Furnace Road. Zone is RR two. Applicants are seeking a dimensional variance for the following. Lot six point one dimensional side setback relief for existing dwelling, thirty four point five feet on Easterly side and thirty four point nine feet Westerly side where fifty is required. Dimensional relief of four feet of existing pool shed where five feet is required. Dimensional relief for existing stable, five point three feet from property line where ten feet is required. Lot six point two dimensional relief, the existing garage to be one foot from the property line where ten feet is required. Lot seven dimensional relief sought for insufficient frontage. Lot seven will have nine six, ninety six point oh eight feet of frontage where two twenty five is required. Dimensional side yard relief is forty five feet, a forty five feet is sought for the existing dwelling where fifty is, feet is required.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Good evening, Mister Chair, members of the board. Amy Goins, attorney for applicants and owners. Um, I do have the green card.
Just give it to John.
Um, I'd like to briefly introduce the team, give an overview and then take testimony. I will be offering testimony in the form of.
All right, I'm just gonna swear you in court. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay.
Right, so I'm uh, Amy Goins, attorney with Ursillo Tights Rich in Providence, representing here tonight, Jaclyn, Ms. Jaclyn Bakari, uh, who is the owner of lot six point one and seven, as well as Michael and Amanda Varier, who's the owner of lot six point two. They're here with me tonight, as well as Bill Coyle, our real estate expert. I do have um, hard copies of Mister Coyle's resume and report, um, which were previously submitted to the board electronically through um, through the clerk. May I uh, distribute those? Um, while I'm at it, I also have um, an exhibit you haven't seen before. I'll call this one Applicants One. It's just a side-by-side comparison of the existing and proposed lot configurations. I'll wait to distribute Mister Coyle's report so that we can um, get on with this. I know we've had a long evening. Um, so it, looking at the exhibit I just passed out, um, this application involves three parcels, uh, existing lot seven, six point one and six point two. Uh, so six point two is the Easterly parcel, uh, that's three thirty six Hope Furnace Road, that's owned by the Variers. Lot six point one is the middle parcel, three forty four Hope Furnace Road, that's owned by the J and J Bakari Family Trust. Lot seven is the Westerly parcel, known as three forty four R Hope Furnace Road, also owned by the Bakari Trust. Um, the, the lot six point one is the residence of Ms. Jaclyn Bakari and lot uh, seven is uh, her daughter's residence. This um, zoning application is unique in that there is nothing changing on the ground, no new development uh, is proposed, no change to the existing use of the properties. It involves dimensional relief associated with a proposed administrative subdivision, so that would be our next step if the board grants approval tonight. Um, the lot lines are shifting to facilitate Mister Varier's purchase of an existing garage located on lot six point one. So um, again, if, and thank you, looking at the site plan, you can see um, on the middle shaded portion, there's an existing garage. Um, Mister Varier intends to purchase that garage for his personal use. Um, the proposed lot configuration would have it located on the same property as his existing residence, so the lot line of lot six point two will be shifted west to accommodate that. Um, for lot six point two, then, we need setback relief for the existing garage. Um, again, the location of the garage isn't changing, just the lot line of ten foot setback is required from the sideline, where uh, it would be uh, one foot from the lot line under the proposed configuration. And as part of the administrative subdivision, the lot lines for lot six point one and seven would also be shifted because currently, um, as you can see, Ms. Bakari's residence straddles the line between those two lots. We're proposing to reconfigure the lot such that her dwelling would now be located entirely on lot six point one, and then the dwelling on lot seven would be the only dwelling to occupy that lot. So the lot lines for these properties were drawn with existing conditions such as topography and vegetation in mind. For lot six point one, we need side setback relief for the existing dwelling, for the pool shed and the stable. Again, none of these um, buildings are moving. It's simply setback relief that would be needed for the new uh, lot configuration. And with lot seven, we need side setback relief for the existing dwelling. We also need relief for insufficient frontage. Um, I'd like to ask um, Ms. Bakari to offer testimony to the board. And um, Ms. Bakari, how long have you lived at your current residence?
Uh, yes, can you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
How long have you lived at your current residence?
Forty four years.
Okay, and you previously lived there with your husband?
Yes.
He passed away in twenty twenty?
Yes.
Do you intend to continue living at your current residence?
Yes.
Okay, um, and are you retired?
Oh, yes.
Yes, um, you, the, the sale of the garage um, will reduce the size of your property?
That's correct.
Will that enable you to stay in your home and continue paying the taxes?
Yeah, it should bring the tax, total tax bill down, yes.
Okay, are you aware of the recent neighbor complaints related to the activity on your property?
Yeah.
Um, and to your knowledge, was that the result of activity by Mister John Deambro?
That's correct.
And was Mister Deambro leasing that garage from you?
Yes.
Is he still leasing that garage?
No.
Is, is he, is his activity on the property done?
Yes, he might have one more day to fit the tools that are in there, but that should be done by tomorrow.
So recently, he was getting all of his, his tools off the property?
That's correct.
He's not coming back, right?
No.
Mister Varier is buying the garage?
That's correct.
Okay, um, is the board having questions for Mister Bakari? I, I would also have Mister Varier offer some testimony.
I got a question on the lot lines. I thought you were just gonna include this garage. This lot line's going all the way over to here?
So if you, if you look at the proposed lot, yes, thank you.
Don't touch it.
I said, yes, you can sit, thank you.
Okay, but the garage is way over.
There's two garage.
One in the light.
Yes, so the garage that, um, the garage that Mister Varier is purchasing is the larger garage that located close to his property. Um, so this is the property line to be abandoned and, and this is the proposed property line. Um, this garage is the garage that required setback relief, the small metal-framed garage on the western um, side.
So you're gonna incorporate those two lots together. Mister Varier is gonna be the owner of one big chunk now?
Yes, lot, lot six point one will be getting larger.
Okay.
It's existing.
Okay, I got it. It's, yeah.
What's going with this one, right?
So Mister Varier owns the house all the way over here?
Yes.
So he's gonna take the garage and the lot that runs right up to the edge of Mrs. Bakari's property?
Correct.
All right, so he's gonna take six point one and six point two?
No, he's just, six point two, he or, he currently owns with his wife, it's just getting larger.
Oh, okay, so he's gonna, but he's gonna combine them.
So the metal shed that's still there is gonna stay on Mister Varier's property?
Correct, we're starting with three lots and we're ending with three lots. No new lots are being created. It's solely an administrative subdivision.
So i- if I can jump in, there are currently two lot lines. There is a dashed line here, if you can see the.
No, I can see it.
And then there's a dashed line here. So they're taking those two lot lines and they're moving them left. So now the new property line will be here and then another new property line will be here.
But when we had three lots, we're only gonna have two.
No, there will still be.
There are two property lines that are being slid over. So this line will become this line and then this line.
I can't see what you're doing, but that's all right. You're gonna turn that line over this way. Don't touch it, John.
So this property line.
Did you not hear us about talking about touching that screen?
This property line will slide over.
Yep.
And this property line will slide over to here.
Okay.
That part I didn't catch.
Okay, now it makes sense.
But you're gonna go right through the house?
No, it, the existing lot line goes right through the house. We're proposing to shift that Westerly lot line, lot six point one, we're proposing to shift it west, um, so that Ms. Bakari's house isn't straddling a lot line.
It's gonna go this way?
So she own two lots?
She owns two lots currently.
I understand, she probably owns more than that, but that's besides.
Right now.
So going back to the metal shed.
So she's gonna move it over to here?
No.
This line's coming.
This line right here is gonna move right over to there.
Correct.
The little skinny one's gonna get.
Wait, maggot two, you start at the same time?
Can I talk now? Yes. So what, what's the metal shed, what, Mister?
And the metal shed is gonna remain on the property that I'm acquired.
Okay.
And it's just very close to the property line. We have like thirteen iterations to have it follow this.
Do you need to swear him in? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Probably should.
Yeah.
Please come up to the podium and give your full name and address.
Uh, Michael Varier, three thirty six Hope Furnace Road, Hope, Rhode Island, zero two eight three one.
Okay, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, I'm still lost in the property.
So if I, this is like thirteen iterations to get to where we are now, so I've seen you a few times.
See this line?
Yes.
Yep. This line is gonna stay the way it is.
Yep.
This one right here is just gonna be, it's, this is gonna disappear. This is gonna be one lot. So one lot, two lot, three lot.
Oh, and draws another lot over here.
Well, technically, yeah.
How can this be another lot? This is going over to here?
That's number seven, highlighter. Six point two.
Seven's got the house on.
The dot, see, see, see right here? See the, the dotted line?
Yeah.
That's just gonna move all the way over to here, excuse me, John. Instead of having two lots, it's gonna be one. See the house. Follow me?
No.
See this line right here? That line's gonna have, this lot's moving over. So this all becomes one lot. So this all becomes one lot. So our house is, it's sitting on two lots.
So what's happening here?
Look at this.
Years ago, this was a lot, this was a lot, this was a lot, this was a lot, this is a lot.
It's gonna take this garage to.
So, Mr. Varia owns, this is buying this parcel.
This will be one.
I'm only getting two lots. Oh, this one way over here. But it's not even front.
Yeah, that's, that's seven. To be hers.
Oh, that's seven.
That's seven. So this is, this is moving here, this is moving here, and this is, it's the seven, that's not really.
Okay.
Alright, so, next person to touch the screen is gonna get the, gonna get, you're gonna stay after school. So the metal shed, you, you don't wanna move it?
You're not moving any structure?
Because?
It's, it's a, it's a warehouse.
Okay, so we've been upset. I, you said it was a metal shed, so I said.
No, it's, it's a, a two-car carport.
Okay, okay. So the line's gonna be running right on, on the backside.
Alright, what are you gonna do with the big garage?
Still some classic cars.
So you're not gonna run any kind of business?
Not running business, I leased a building off a dons father actually last while we're, we have a 60-acre furniture patchit where I house the rest of my stuff. My excavator is at my house maybe once in a great while. I, it will be there for a little bit, 'cause I'm gonna take out the big rock pile, and they put a barn up later down the road, but put some paddocks to bring my horses home.
That's an improvement. You're gonna tell me we're gonna clean up over there?
It, it's, it's in the process now, but the excavators are there, the dunks is lined up. We've, it, it's been a, a very good communication with all the neighbors about the amount of stuff that will come out right off the rip. So, you'll see a very considerable upgrade to it in, uh, you know, in the near future.
Okay, it appears to be an improvement to the neighborhood.
And Mr. Varia, how long have you owned your current residence?
So we've been 11 years at my house.
And do you intend to stay there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and again, you have commercial property elsewhere?
I, yes, I do, I own a lot.
Okay, oh, how many classic cars do you own?
Six or seven right now.
Okay.
Not competing with the rest of the people in town.
Ah, maybe I should touch them. Maybe dump some off.
Buy them all.
No, he's got something he wants to do.
Oh, there you go. When my wife's not around, we'll talk about it.
She's giving you the eye, dude.
I know, nothing.
I, I understand it, so I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, no, I do now, thank you very much.
I have no further questions for Mr. Varia. I will ask Mr. Coyle to, um, to come up and briefly describe his, um, qualifications and conclusions while I distribute his, uh, his report.
Give your full name and address.
I do.
Okay. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. Uh, I'm Bill Coyle III, former state appraiser and consultant. I have been for about 50 years. I have been before this board on many occasions for various types of issues, uh, several years. I have testified before all 39 cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island, most of them in First County, Massachusetts, and surrounding areas. I currently only hold licenses, a brokerage license and real estate appraisal licenses in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, because I'm trying to slow down. And, uh, I hold an MAI designation, I'm, uh, for appraisal.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I moved if we accept him as an expert witness.
Yeah. Hi, okay, I approve.
'Cause the night is getting long. As to the issue before us here, I've looked at the subject property, and as you can see, the highlighted property, basically, that's just sliding to the left to, uh, include the garage and that white roof building, if you point, we'll be closer to that. That is the lot line that is now going to be added to 6.2. So basically, it's just adding that to it. The reason they selected that line is that you see the line he's drawing now, um, that's a hedgerow and all of the stuff that went with it.
Yep.
But if you saw the flat map previously, the house is actually built on two lots, and that's where the problems came. Where that red line is, is, it cuts through the house. And so by putting it in that position, and the, the way it was sculpted and laid out, you wouldn't know that the lot line cut through the house. They just built it that way. So where the hedges are, uh, the sheds all line up on that line, that's where, basically, they're selling that piece off. And then, the next problem is, you can see that they have two other houses, the main house that we're talking about and that one smaller. And they had to draw lot lines to accommodate the frontages as best they could, and the setbacks as best they could. So that you could, if that house could magically be moved, for the last, everything would have been great. Instead, they had to put the hips that you see on the new proposed lot in order to, uh, square away and minimize the impact of the side yard restrictions of the 7 and 6.1. 6.2 doesn't really have a problem, with the exception of the side yard setback for the metal shed that is right on the property line. And adjacent to it, just below it, you can see that there is also another shed that was set up, uh, by the pool area, and that was just also, they're set up right on that red line that you had put up previously, it's still there. And you can also see the hedgerow cutting down that same thing. It was just set up that everybody just assumed, this is my stuff, and don't come over here with it.
Can I ask Ms. Bakari a question? Did, did Johnny build this, or did you buy this already built?
He didn't build any of it.
Oh, you, so you, you bought it that way?
I bought the house like that, we modernized the house, but the.
Oh, yes, I, I've been in your house lots of times.
The house was there, we bought that. The little house in the back was originally the house on the property. And, and the building used to belong to different people.
Right.
They had a machine shop in there, and the company that owned the machine shop from New Jersey had a new manager put a house in.
Right.
We built the house down.
Okay.
I did none of the construction.
No, I'm just curious, is, like, did you buy it this way, which, so it was built, was built on two lots, it was just, but it was two lots that one person or one family owned, so it made sense? Now we're trying to fix it up, make it even better?
No, we did none of the construction, other than the lot.
So basically, the issue is that the side yard restrictions that we're talking about for low lots, several of them are just for the shed purposes.
Yep.
Not really anything of substantial interest. We do this for some of the side yard setbacks for the little house. Um, and we've listed all of the various components. I've looked through the neighborhood, I've looked through similar types of situations. This is obviously far more unusual because of the commercial nature that this site had it previously. Uh, that it will be going away for all intensive purposes. So that fixes up that part of the problem. The, um, residential ones, the street frontage is gonna be sufficient for one, but because of some, the way that it was built and the topography, they're going to put an easement on the frontage in order to get access to the little house. Cutting across the frontage from the main house. And so that, ultimately, somebody in the future may wanna try to build the driveway alternatively out of the frontage that's left there, but right now, they just wanna deal with it in that fashion, it's easier. I believe, in my opinion, that it will cause no impact on any of the surrounding property values in any way. If anything, the change of use is going to be an enhancement to the area. And the side yard restrictions that are currently in place are either back far enough from the street frontage or in the view that they shouldn't cause any problem whatsoever as far as any of, uh, the issues for valuation. I think it's generally, it's a pre-existing situation where nobody really paid attention back in the old days, uh, up this far. Back then when this all occurred, it's not as a result of anything that these people have been involved with. And, um, I think that this administrative change would be in keeping with the comprehensive plan and would cause, uh, no problems, as I said, for any of the valuation issues. And, um, the granting of the relief would be the least relief necessary in order to square away the issues. And that the denial would cause more than a mere inconvenience.
Any environmental concerns about the businesses that were there before, in that, in the barn or the garage?
So we, before I came up with this plan, I, I have an excavator, a 40 ton excavator. I did, for like, I took punch and bowls to see if there was nothing to talk, clean fill. There was no, nothing to raise any concern. There's no one about oil tanks, the oil tank is inside the garage, it's a 275 gallon tank. The well water I had tested, um, that is in the middle, um, I won't touch the stream at all. So the well is, is right here. And, and the well water I tested, no issue with that, so, um, that was kind of an easy way to, you know, stuff there, I guess. But we couldn't find anything to raise concern on my end, because we're gonna lie there in our own insurance as well.
And you have two children, correct?
I have four children, and another one on the way.
Okay.
Everything's working.
I like this guy. Dude, you are in so much trouble.
Am I living in that building? Oh, no. But no, we, we exhausted all those avenues, you know, before we went further on it anyway, so.
So you have no concern?
I have no concern.
He's gonna have concerns later.
Yeah.
I either, you know, your age.
Alright, is there any other board member decided questions? Okay, at this time here, I'm gonna ask, take a seat and see if, does I see people in the audience?
Thank you.
Would like to speak on this application? I see the two gentlemen in the back.
You look marvelous. You guys must know each other.
Alright, so, we have, okay, so, nobody in the audience have a question or ballot for, or on, online in the audience, or anything? Okay, uh, since this is, going up and looking at this is not gonna make any difference, it's not gonna change anything.
Make a motion, we vote on this tonight.
I agree on that. Russ has made a motion, we vote on tonight. Lenny has, uh, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, again, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this as presented. Uh, Lenny? Okay, Russ, how do you vote on this?
Approved.
As presented.
As presented. Uh, Lenny?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
Approve as presented.
Russ?
Approve as presented.
Same, approve as presented.
Okay. Okay, applicant approved as presented.
Good luck on both, on both fronts.
You rise over.
Thank you.
Nice 32.
32 for the, uh.
32. The house. 54 Chevy.
The house. Mr. Moderator, make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion adjourned, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did.
The little house that's off, the driveway runs up and it's up in the back.
I never knew it was there.